All right. Good evening and welcome to the June 3, 2025 City Council Regular Hybrid Meeting. I'm Mayor Saleem Neese, and this evening's hybrid City Council meeting is being brought to you in person by Zoom. We're also broadcasting live on MIT TV Channel 21 and on the city's YouTube channel. Welcome, everyone, and thanks for coming tonight. Council members, please have your microphones turned off for roll call. City Clerk Andrea Larson, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Androl.
Here.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Here.
Councilmember Wyker.
Here.
Councilmember Weinberg.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
Here.
And Mayor Neese.
Here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Next, we have the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone in council chambers can stand to face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we now move to approval of tonight's agenda. If there's no questions, may I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum, seconded by Councilmember Weinberg. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Wyker.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Councilmember Weinberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Aye.
Councilmember Androl.
Aye.
And Mayor Neese.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Motion passes. The agenda is approved. Next up on the agenda, we have AB 6692, which is the 2024 Community Member of the Year Proclamation Number 361. The City Council is honored to be presenting the 2024 Community Member of the Year Award tonight to Jennifer Goodrich. Before we invite Jennifer up to accept the award, I need a motion from council to approve Proclamation Number 361.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Androl, seconded by Councilmember Weinberg. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Androl.
Aye.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Aye.
Councilmember Weinberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Mayor Neese.
Aye.
And Councilmember Wyker.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. The proclamation is approved, and I would like to welcome Jennifer Goodrich to receive the 2024 Community Member of the Year Award. And I'm going to welcome you up here. She comes. Let me have you hold this while I read it. Whereas in 1990, the City Council began recognizing outstanding contributions of Mercer Island community members, and the city has continued this tradition for more than 30 years. During the February 4, 2025 City Council Planning Session, the City Council selected Jennifer Goodrich as the 2024 Community Member of the Year for her contributions to the Mercer Island community. Jennifer has served as the Board of Directors for the Mercer Island Farmers Market since 2018. Through her service and leadership on the board, she has continually showed her dedication to the Mercer Island community. Jennifer has served as president and vice president of the board and is currently serving as past president. During her tenure as president, she guided the market through the challenging post-COVID period, demonstrating remarkable commitment and resilience. She has spent countless volunteer hours strategic problem-solving and has a deep passion for creating a vibrant community gathering space. Jennifer's leadership skills have helped her coordinate and inspire the board's collective work, which has been instrumental in the market's success. Under Jennifer and the board's leadership, the Mercer Island Farmers Market has become a true community gathering space that brings the Mercer Island community together and is a beloved community resource. Now, therefore, I, Saleem Neese, Mayor of the City of Mercer Island, do hereby proclaim Jennifer Goodrich as the 2024 Community Member of the Year. And that's the proclamation. Congratulations. And before I ask her to say her words, just to open it up to council, would anybody like to share any of their thoughts before we proceed?
Sure.
Councilmember Androl.
Well, I just want to thank you for all your service. I think we all know, sitting up here and out there, that volunteer work can sometimes be thankless, but the payback in personal satisfaction and contribution to the community is immense. And so I just wanted to thank you for all that you've done.
Councilmember Weinberg.
So, thank you, Jennifer, for your hard work and leadership under which this cherished institution on the island has flourished. Thank you.
Councilmember Wyker.
Jennifer, Sunday, opening day. Thank you so much. That market and that community and bringing everyone together and shopping and all the good stuff that's there, food and friends and family. Just can't thank you enough for all your service to that wonderful aspect of our community. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
Yeah. You know, I think one thing during the pandemic that was lost, and I think it's one thing that we all value so much from Mercer Island, is the sense of community and getting to see people, you know, that are your neighbors, whether literally or figuratively. And, you know, one thing that I helped, that I think really helped restore that after the pandemic was the Farmers Market. You know, it's a treasured community event, for sure, but I think it represents a community gathering space and a good place for everyone to make new friends, see old friends, run into people you haven't seen in a while. And Jennifer, I know under your leadership that that was something that was not easy to do during the pandemic. I vividly remember the one-way streets, essentially, and, you know, trying to get people to not walk across a barrier that I don't know what they thought it was for, if it wasn't for telling people not to walk through the barrier. But, you know, the work was so worth it, and I really appreciate it. I know that the community really appreciates it and what it meant then, what it continues to mean. So, thank you so much. Congratulations to you. Congratulations to your whole family. Everyone who's here. I've had the pleasure of knowing you all for a very long time. So, congratulations.
Thank you. Councilmember Reynolds.
A city can be just a collection of people, or it can be a culture and a home. And it's places and things like the Farmers Market that turn a city into a home for all of us. Just want to thank you for all you've done to make it real.
Okay. If you'd like to say any words.
I'm not sure I could put it any better than you all did, but thank you for this wonderful honor. I am so proud to receive this Community Member of the Year Award. This recognition is not just a personal achievement, but a testament to the collective spirit that defines our Farmers Market. From the very beginning, I was drawn to the market's mission to support local farmers, artisans, and creators while fostering a sense of community. Over the years, I've had the privilege of working alongside passionate individuals who share this vision. Together, we've cultivated more than just fresh produce. We've nurtured relationships, built trust, and created a space where everyone feels welcome. This award reflects the hard work and dedication of many. To our vendors, thank you for your unwavering commitment to quality and sustainability. To our sponsors, donors, and community partners, like the City of Mercer Island, your contributions ensure that our market remains a vibrant community hub. To our staff and volunteers, your selfless contributions behind the scenes make everything possible. And to our customers, your support and enthusiasm breathe life into our market every week. I also want to express my gratitude to the market's leadership and fellow board members, both past and present. Your guidance and collaboration have been instrumental in our shared success. And of course, to my family and friends, thank you for your encouragement and understanding, especially on those crazy Sundays. I'm so pleased to see the steadfast support of our community. I've always believed the market existed to help support local businesses, promote sustainability, and strengthen the bonds that unite the island. Together, we can ensure that our Farmers Market remains a cherished community asset for years to come. Thank you once again for this incredible honor. I am grateful to be part of such a remarkable city. Thank you.
Do you want to get any pictures with council or something that's a little bit less ad hoc than what we've done?
Yeah, well, sure, yeah.
We can take a quick 10-minute recess, Ms. Mayor Neese, for pictures and reset the room.
That sounds great. Okay.
City Council will be in recess for the next 10 minutes.
Okay, the council is returning now from a 10-minute recess, and our next item of business is the City Manager's Report, and we welcome City Manager Jesse Bunn.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Ali Speitz is gonna screen share for me. There we go. Thanks, Ali. Happy June 3. Next slide, please. And next one. All right, council, as is customary, I preview the upcoming meetings we have on deck. Your next regular council meeting is Tuesday, June 17. We have a full suite of Board and Commission meetings this month, all listed here. And as a reminder, we keep our calendar updated on the city's website. Next slide, please. Just wanted to give you a very quick update on our advanced metering infrastructure project. And council, we will be coming to you probably this fall with a more comprehensive capital project update, since some of these projects have been going for many years. But some exciting news on our water meter project. We are now tracking water usage data in real time, instead of relying on bi-monthly water meter readings that were very manual. In fact, last week, we used our new system to identify and troubleshoot 17 different issues for our utility customers that were likely tied to an unknown water leak. So, our new system, our new technology, our upgraded meters are already starting to pay off. We're still working on the final phase of the project, which is conditional use permits for our antennas, and we hope to have this project fully wrapped up by the end of this year. Next slide, please. Also, a project that actually ties into a discussion we have planned for later this evening. Council, you'll recall that we are making a very modest investment in the Public Works Building to keep it operational while we are planning for its replacement, the new public safety and maintenance facility. One of the most problematic components of this building was the green roof that was leaking. So, I am happy to say that we are addressing that. The seismic retrofits are underway, and new roofing membrane was installed last week, as well as steel bracket reinforcement at the shop in the lower offices and several other areas throughout the building. We're also doing the drywall repairs to the ceiling, and we'll be proceeding with our final work in the next two weeks. Next slide, please. Also, another capital project update. We are currently underway with design on three major water system projects. The first one I want to mention is the AC main replacements in the Mercerwood neighborhood. This has been a high priority for the council over the last decade to replace and remove all of the asbestos cement water pipe. You may recall that that type of water pipe is particularly fragile, and we are in the process of removing all of the asbestos pipe from our water network and getting closer. In fact, when you see Jason and his team, Public Works Team, in the fall, they'll let you know how close we are to that goal, getting very close. We are also working on a second phase of our pressure-reducing valve replacement project, where we'll be replacing seven units primarily along West Mercer Way. These components are essential to operating our water system, and they do what they say they do. They're pressure regulators. The big project, I should say, one of the two big projects we're working on right now is the new water supply line project. We have nearly completed site surveying and field locating, and existing utility lines continues. Again, I anticipate a much more comprehensive update on the water supply line replacement project this fall. And heads up, all those projects will be underway in early 2026. This is really a fun story, and I am so proud of our Public Works Team and our planners. As you know, council, we are in the process of reimagining Dean's Children's Park. We have several playground structures that are due for replacement, a picnic shelter that's failing, the water comes right through the roof, undersized restroom facilities. And for a park that's really relatively flat, we have virtually no accessible play structures there. So, we are engaged with the community on a planning and visioning project to redo Dean's Children's Parks. Last month, the Parks Capital team visited 54 classes across four elementary schools. And this was so cool because it makes sense, right? If we're designing a new playground, that we're talking to the kids about what they want. More than 1,200 students from kindergarten through fifth grade shared their ideas, and it was great. They had presentations, they got to draw pictures, they got to use sticky dots and vote on their preferences. So, my hats off to the planning team for making time to do that outreach. It was super cool and really, really well-received by the schools and the kids. Next slide, please. Okay. You may not be aware of this. I wanted to share some, an opportunity for volunteer work. The first Thursdays of the month, we are looking for volunteers to join us at Luther Burbank Caretaker's Building or the Caretaker's House. It's a house that's tucked away in the park where we have a nursery. We grow native plants that go back into our parks and open space areas. So, we're looking for some help tending to our nursery plants. Super cool opportunity to come learn about what we're planning, basic plant care, and get involved in parks and open space restoration projects. If you'd like more information, I'm sorry, Ali, it's on the, we have more information on our Parks and Recreation website. Next slide. All right. Well, this is under the category of some good news, but it's not, it's good news for Doug, maybe not good news for us. Council, you know that since we joined forces with Eastside Fire and Rescue, we have received great care from Deputy Chief Doug McDonald, who has served as one of our primary points of contact from Eastside Fire and Rescue. After 34 years of service, Doug is retiring, getting ready to move to Arizona, as I understand. So, he will be wrapping up his service next month, and I wanted to take a moment to say thank you to Doug for your service to the City of Mercer Island and to wish you well in your retirement. And I believe that is our last slide. Thanks, Ali.
Okay. Our next item of business is appearances, which is an opportunity for anyone to speak to the City Council on any item except items requiring a public hearing, any quasi-judicial matters or campaign-related matters. I'll note that there's a public hearing later on the agenda if your comments pertain to objective design review standards in Title 19 of the Mercer Island City Code. Please hold your comments until the public hearing. Tonight's agenda will include in-person public appearance and remote public appearances via Zoom. Individuals wishing to address the council may do so in person or by Zoom or telephone, provided they register with the city clerk by 4:00 PM today. When it's your turn to speak, you'll be called by name. Remarks must be addressed to the council as a whole and not to individual council or staff members. Any person making personal impertinent slanderous remarks or becomes boisterous, threatening, or personally abusive while addressing the City Council may be requested to leave the meeting. Please speak audibly, state your name and city of residence for the record. There'll be a timer on the screen. You all have three minutes to speak. When your time is ended, I'll thank you for your comments and move to the next item of business, speaker item of business. City Clerk, please call the first speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our first speaker tonight is Laura Crawford.
Welcome.
Thank you. Are you able to hear me?
Sure can. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I moved to Mercer Island in 1972 in the middle of seventh grade. We live in a house that borders the beautiful Pioneer Park. I graduated with honors in '78 from Mercer Island High School. And then about a year ago, moved back to the same house that borders the park. I use it every day, almost, depending on the weather, 90% of the year. It's got beautiful trails that I could take my wheelchair on. In between the time I moved off the island and went to law school and had a career, I spent a lot of time on the island and used it always when I was here on breaks. My parents, my parents were both part of a committee to maintain the open space and make sure it didn't become a golf course. I just am offering my expertise, my prior legal professional background. I've had a lot of experience with nonprofits and volunteering, and I love the park, I love the island. So, I'm just offering my volunteer services for the Open Conservancy Board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker tonight is Daniel Thompson.
Good evening. My name is Daniel Thompson. I've been a resident of Mercer Island since 1970. These comments are as a private citizen and not member of the Planning Commission. I've written to this council on two separate occasions in September of 2024 and March of 2025 about an issue I think is critical, and that is some type of comprehensive or holistic work plan or group to study the three systemic intersections on Mercer Island. There are the Big Left on Island Crest Way between 80th and North Mercer Way, East Mercer Way and 36th, and 27th through the Town Center. Some of the common features of these systemic intersections are they have ingress and egress from I-90 when Wajdot controls intersections are they have ingress and egress from I-90 when Wajdot controls the ramp metering. Island residents living on the south end and mid-island must drive through the town center to access I-90 going westbound from 76, while those of us living west and north of the town center must drive through the town center to access I-90 going eastbound. Each of these intersections are looking at significant future development and traffic, and congestion on any one of these intersections spills over to the other. In 2019, another lawyer and I appealed to the Growth Management Hearing Board to get the city to adopt the Transportation Concurrent Ordinance, but I don't really think it is a very good tool for systemic intersections. It almost reminds me of how water rights are allocated in the West, where it's first come, first served. The current construction on North Mercer Way between 80th Avenue Southeast and Island Crest Way shows just how little capacity we have left on any of these intersections. I don't think we should wait till we get to the point where the intersections are once again congested like they were pre-pandemic. I know they're starting to come back. I think we should gather the stakeholders together now and obtain some realistic traffic studies by the city and begin to discuss how to allocate the limited traffic capacity. I don't want to wait until we get to the point where either we have to tell an applicant that the intersections cannot handle any more development, and the city does not have the ability to improve the levels of service, or worse, pretend like the issue does not exist and let the congestion get so bad that it becomes literally intolerable for everyone who must use these intersections daily, including people who live on the south and mid-island. I just think if you put this on your work plan, maybe with the city engineer, Jeff Thomas, maybe a council member or two, I'd really like to see the ball get going so that we understand that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Addie Smith.
Welcome.
Hello. My name is Addie Smith. Today is June 3, 2025. I am speaking before Mercer Island City Council in Mercer Island, Washington. Mercer Island is located about seven miles outside of Seattle in King County. I want to talk about why black people aren't safe in Democrat-led states wherein Democrats control the state legislature. Democrats in Washington State have controlled both houses in the state legislature since 1992. There's no reason why laws aren't in place to hold police and judges accountable when they fail to protect black people living in the state and keeping them safe from racist and experiencing violent hate crime attacks. After experiencing hate crimes, the police refusing to write police reports, a black woman had to defend herself from an attack that would have taken her life. The white female convicted felon for trafficking had a gun and would have taken this black woman's life. It was the Mercer Island Police who refused to write one single police report. The first police officer she spoke with about the attack and requested to file a police report was a sergeant. I won't provide his name right now, but he refused to file that report. She also sent emails to all of these sitting council members and previous mayor Benson Wong. She also sent emails to the previous police chief Ed Holmes, who responded one month before she was vicious to the attack that he hoped things would, quotes, "He quote, 'Hope things would settle down for her soon.'" Why in Democrat-led states wherein Democrats control both houses in the state legislature are black people less safe? This woman has not been able to successfully obtain employment in her career field because the city of Mercer Island has been reporting this case in her background checks and even listing court dates. The city of Mercer Island employees are referring to this innocent black woman as a prolific offender when she merely defended herself from white racists intent on killing her. These attacks began because this black woman refused to violate local, state, and federal housing laws to allow one white woman to live in a low-income apartment in a luxury building that she didn't qualify for. Her income was too high. This white woman lived in the building because she was having an extramarital affair with a man whose name was on the lease and actually legally lived in the building. This white woman began gossiping with white neighbors in the building, exclaiming that this black woman, who was the manager, was trying to, quote, "move all the white people out to move black people in," end quote. When hate crimes happen to black people and the police arrest the victim after defending themselves, it completely destroys their lives if no one stands up and stops the act. Judge Marcus Naylor told this black woman, who went before him in the Bellevue District Court requesting an order of protection, that these attacks were, quote, "part and partial of the job." Judge Virginia Amato told this black woman that hitting her and calling her the N-word, hard R, was not assault. In a Democratic-led state where--
All right, who's next?
Our next speaker is Matt Goldbach.
Hi. My name is Matt Goldbach, Mercer Island resident, and I'm going to be a little briefer than that. I basically came here to thank you guys, thank the city council and the city employees and administration, the incredible job you did for Jake Jacobson and his family and friends. And I think it was a celebration of life that, I know, I knew Jake, but I learned a lot about him there, and heartfelt, wonderful thing to do, and I was really surprised that the city stepped up in the way they did. It was actually quite amazing. I was really impressed, and I think anyone that was there felt the same way, and you guys should be proud of what you did. That's all of you guys. And that's it. I did that in what? Not even a minute.
Thank you. All right.
Mr. Mayor, the last person who signed up to speak appears to have left the meeting.
All right. So we will, with no further public comments, closed public comments, and move to the consent agenda. The consent agenda contains AB 6693, May 23, 2025 payroll certification, AB 6694 certification for claims paid April 16, 2025 through April 30, 2025, City Council regular hybrid meeting minutes of May 20, 2025, AB 6695 Pride Month Proclamation Number 360, and AB 6702, 2025 Open Space Conservancy Trust Appointments Resolution Number 1678. Council, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved?
Second.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Weinberg, seconded by Senator Andrell?
Correct. That was what I heard, Mr. Mayor.
City Clerk, please call the roll.
Council, Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum, Councilmember Wyker?
Aye.
Councilmember Weinberg?
Aye.
Mayor Neese?
Aye.
Councilmember Andrell?
Aye.
And Councilmember Reynolds?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Our first item of regular business is AB 6704, which is the City Council Position Number Seven Candidate Interviews and Appointment. Council, Appendix C of the Council Rules of Procedure provides for the procedure for filling a vacancy of the city council. The purpose tonight is to hear from the candidates who have applied for the vacant city council position number seven and vote to appoint an applicant to position number seven. Since the May 28 deadline, we've received one, we have had one candidate withdraw his application, Adam Ragham, so this leaves us with two applicants, Daniel Becker and Zachary McLean. I'll invite both participants to join us at the table up front. Take a seat that is to your desire there. Each candidate will have five minutes to speak to the city council and address four areas outlined in the application materials of, one, why do you want to serve on the city council? Two, what experiences, talents, or skills do you bring to the city council and community that you would like to highlight? Three, are there any regional issues or forums in which you have particular interest or expertise, for example, transportation, water supply, human services? Four, do you want to serve on the city council because of a particular local issue of which you want to work on or interests you more broadly or more distributed? Pursuant to Appendix C, the order of appearance will be determined by a random lot drawing. The city clerk has provided me with this bowl, two names in it. Shake this up. And Zach McLean, you will go first, and you'll have five minutes to address the council about the items I outlined.
Thank you. My name is Zachary McLean, and I go by Zach. I've lived on Mercer Island for eight and a half years, and I reside with my wife and my son, and we moved back to the island eight and a half years ago where my wife grew up here, and we made the decision to raise my son here. I want to serve it, serve on the council because I care about Mercer Island and I to continue to be a vibrant place to live for generations to come. What Mercer Island means to me is peace, beautiful green belts. It's not overbuilt, a community with opportunity. Since I've lived on MI, I've been active volunteer with the Boys and Girls Club, the PTA, the library at Island Park. I'm also professionally serve on the Employee Culture and Engagement Committee at T-Mobile down the street. With a strong business background in managing complex business operations, I think I would be a good addition to the city council. I bring a strong business pedigree. I've managed teams in supply chain, product management, data analytics, business operations for small companies from $20 million to large companies for $4 billion in revenue. From 2010 to 2017, I led data analytics and supply chains for the largest Verizon retailer of 800 locations, 3,000 employees, with $1 billion revenue, 4,000 SKUs across 35 states. We experienced 25 mergers and acquisitions during that time that I had to implement product portfolio, contract procurement, make some tough decisions on organizational alignment. From 2017 to 2020, I grew a startup from $0 to $20 million, a wireless accessory branded product that was sold in Hudson News and duty-free in the airport. For, since 2022, I've worked at T-Mobile growing their broadband business that started with zero customers to 7 million customers to this day and over $4 billion in revenue on an annual basis. I manage an $800 million cap X budget currently, and we expect that to grow. I should call out beyond just my professional experience. I come from multi-generational real estate developers, so I understand the cost that it takes to build a commercial building, hands-on. I regularly use AI tools on a daily basis, all the main ones that exist. We also have our own in-house ones at T-Mobile. As it pertains to local interest, I first and foremost, before I answer the question, I just want to acknowledge the passing of Mr. Jacobson. I know he meant a lot to the folks in this room. I wouldn't be sitting here if it wasn't for that situation. During this transition, I don't want to be a disruptor. I want to be a person that provides additional glue during the transition, so when there is a vote in November, the citizens can decide who that person is. Key thing that I, that interests me is fiscal responsibility. You guys have done a really good job. As I read through the 2025 budget, there are areas of opportunity that that come out to me that I can touch on briefly. In particular, I plan to take a broader interest. There's no specific interest that that comes to mind, but the things that pop out in the budget that are interested to me are sensible investment in city infrastructure, which I've already seen in the first half hour of the callouts of the water investments that are being made. Kudos. Sustainable growth in town center. There's some buildings that are going up. There's been remodels, but I think there's a lot of work that's already been done and more to be done to make sure this is, continues to be a vibrant city. And closely monitoring our city overhead costs, such as our SGA expenses, to make sure that they're in line with the sustainable revenue that's coming in from taxes. Last, I just want to say thank you. I appreciate everything you guys do. Thank you for keeping this a beautiful city, and thanks for your time.
Thank you. All right. I will give the same opportunity to you, Mr. Becker, five minutes.
Hello. My name is Daniel Becker. It's great to be here tonight, and thank you for the chance to tell you and the community a little bit about myself and why I hope you'll consider me for this appointment. You know, it's a funny thing, growing up on Mercer Island. A ton of my friends said they would never move back here, the nosy parents, the pervasive police, and there's nothing to do. Yet in hindsight, it's obvious that a safe, quiet community with, with great schools is pretty, is pretty awesome. These days, so many classmates have returned, it's almost hard to track them all, even for me, and I'm in charge of the reunions, because we all want to give our kids the same chance that we had growing up here in this incredible city. As for me, I graduated from MI, went to UW, and that's where we founded the company that I own and run today. As CTO, I develop modern technology solutions. As CFO, I oversee accounting and financial reporting. And as a business owner, I worry about operational efficiency, revenue streams, and balancing different stakeholders with different needs. I mention these experiences because they define the skills that I will bring to council and our community. So with all this going on, how do I have time for city council? I do work a lot, although I don't do 80-hour weeks anymore, and we have an amazing five-year-old son sitting behind me here who is growing up way too fast, and I cherish every moment with him. But I'm at a point where I want to do something to give back and help others. As you all know, it's getting harder to find good people for public service, so if I have the time and experience that could benefit my community, I owe it to my friends and neighbors to pitch in and help. One reason it's harder to find good people is because politics has gotten uglier. I committed to my family that if I ran, I would be positive and encourage a more civil discourse. That's not a policy goal, but it is something that I would still like to make a difference on, promoting listening and being respectful, even with people that hold positions different from my own. And when I meet those folks and they ask my vision, it's simple. I want MI to remain a high-quality city. The obvious follow-up is, what does that mean to me? But I usually turn that around and ask people, what would make your life better? The guidance for this interview asks if I want to serve on city council for a particular local issue, and this would be it, if you can call it one issue. How can I help improve the lives of our residents? That is the reason I am interested in serving. I believe Mercer Island is a great place to live, but we can do even better. In my application, I included examples of things I hear repeatedly, like permitting and restaurants and parking. I know you hear all those, too. But I take notes when residents say what would make their life better, and it's often this boring stuff, things that residents want, but they aren't coming to council meetings demanding. The city manager and her team do a great job, and we need to support them while still being vigilant in our efforts to preserve and enhance our city's quality of life. For example, the financial outlook in the coming years looks concerning, and residents expect us to both manage their tax dollars wisely and continue providing the services that they deserve. Then we have the PSM facility, which is critically needed for reasons you all know, but may not be obvious to residents who aren't following every council discussion. But I know this facility is essential, and I am ready to do whatever it will take to help you make it happen. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, this city has given me so much over the years and continues to give to my family. I am here today asking for an opportunity to give back to this amazing city. I promise to work tirelessly for our residents because they deserve nothing less. As Zach mentioned, it's important to recognize that we are only here doing this tonight because of the passing of Councilmember Jacobson, who by all accounts was an example of working tirelessly for our residents. Listening to the tributes from you all and community members, even those who disagreed on policy recognized him as someone with a big heart and a love for the island. I didn't know him well, but I met him on a number of occasions, and his devotion to public service was clear. No one can replace him, but I will hold him as a role model of how to be a dedicated public servant. Thank you for letting me be here tonight. I am sincerely grateful to all of you for your service to our city. I would be honored and humbled at the opportunity to join you in this journey. Thank you again.
Thank you. And, you know, before we continue our deliberations, I want to thank both of you for applying. Mr. Becker, for your many years of service in the Arts County Council and to the community, your works on the Parks Levy, you really have found ways to give back, and I appreciate that support. I'd be remiss if I didn't say to Mr. McLean, Coach Zach, the coach of my son's select baseball team, and also the coach of the Orioles, who beat my son's New York Yankees last night in the semifinal quarterfinals. So congratulations on your win. Go Orioles. We're looking for a deep Mercer Island victory in the Little League Championship. So council, if there are any questions, now would be the time, and if there are no questions, Councilmember Weinberg.
Yeah, thank you. So I would like to ask a question of both candidates. I'll ask them in reverse order from how we did the first one. In recent years, an increasing proportion of the workload of Mercer Island City Council and Planning Commission and community planning and development staff has become devoted to implementing significant changes to land use legislation that's originating from state leadership. And our legislators and our governor do listen closely to their constituents, and especially to the collective voice of the council members of the cities in their districts. So my question to you is, what would you like the city of Mercer Island to prioritize in its communications with its legislators and the governor in the lead-up-- in its communications with its legislators and the governor in the lead-up to the 2026 session? Let's just go first.
Am I going first?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think that they, the state, has passed a lot of changes recently, and from what I've seen from your council meetings and from what I've heard from cities across the state is that it's a lot of work. And I think that I would tell our legislators that they need to look more closely at the impact that this workload is having on the cities, and it's not only taking a lot of work, it's also pushing other things that we want to work on behind from what CPD needs to do. So I would ask them to more thoughtfully look at the impact that it's having on cities, giving us unfunded mandates of what we need to be doing, and maybe take a pause for a little while and let cities catch up so that we can actually be doing work that we think that will be benefiting our constituents.
Thank you.
I think we have to remember why Mercer Island's great, and it's a balance of diverse parks, great schools, and so we have to remember that when new buildings are coming up, yes, they're great, they add residence, they add more retail. We have to take all that into consideration. In terms of workload, I would consider some of the AI tools. You can scan legal documents pretty quickly to come back with real-time feedback that can, you can work off of. It's been a lifesaver for me, both in looking through legal documents, but also mining data. That's one recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Weiger.
I have a softball for you. So we often have assignments to some of our boards and commissions, and I'm curious which one or two you guys would be most interested in being the liaison to.
Okay, first to you, Coach Zach.
I come to this forum with open arms, whether, what decision you guys decide tonight, I am open to serving on other opportunities. Fiscal management is one that's particular to me. Having come from telecom, utilities is interesting to me. I've also seen some costs creep in the utility costs for our consumers here on the island, such as our, when we changed from public services to the new provider, it's gone up. I lived in Las Vegas for several years, and I can tell you that what I pay here in water bill is 10 times what I pay in a drought city. So there are areas of opportunity. I will leave that open-ended, but there you go.
Mr. Becker.
Yeah, thank you for the question. You know, I try not to put the cart before the horse and start figuring out all the things that I'm going to be doing once I'm on council until I actually get the opportunity to be there. So I haven't spent a ton of time anticipating which boards and commissions I would be on, but I think it would be interesting, I mean, I could obviously jump into the Arts Council easily since I have already been doing that, but I also think that it's important to be well-rounded and try to learn, like in order to be effective, you need to have information across various things, and so it would be great to be on other boards and commissions. I applied at one point to be on the Parks Commission and, you know, was not accepted for that because I thought that that would be interesting, and I think it's important to residents. So at some point, I would love to help with that, but similar, I mean, I'm happy and willing to jump in wherever it would be most helpful for council.
Okay. Council, any other questions? Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
Yeah. What's one thing you'd like to see differently in Mercer Island in, say, the next 10 years, next 20 years, that the city has some control over or some influence on?
Okay, we'll reverse the order. That would get you going.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, well, I think it would be great if we're changing something, it would be great if the police weren't working in trailers. That's something that I would and can hope that we can achieve sometime in the next 10 years. I mean, yeah, I've said earlier, like, my goal is to see a high quality of life. Like, I like seeing the city events that we've done. I like seeing, you know, I'd like to see the trash picked up and the three-way exits. I know that's something that we're already working on. I think there's small things. I mean, my interest in this is like, how do we do the small things in the city that really improve people's lives and that recovering from COVID, we weren't necessarily able to do some of those things? So I don't know, I'm not like giving you like some really big thing that I think that we should be doing, but I think that we should be working over that time period to find lots of little things to continue trying to make the city a nicer place to live, more amenities. You know, I said restaurants, I mean, there's challenges with restaurants, but I mean, if we could figure out how we're to, you know, keep the restaurants that we have at least, you know, would be certainly a good start.
Okay.
Some of the events that we've had so far, they bring smiles to people's faces, such as the summer celebration, the concerts in the park. Across the water every year is Seafair, and that's a big draw, and we should consider kind of just a subset of what they do and to bring more citizens to our island to drive revenue to our retail footprints, and that's just an idea. All of that foot traffic's going across the water right now. That's a thought. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Reynolds.
Looking back over the last few years, what's the worst decision the City Council made, something you disagreed with the most? And what's a decision the City Council made that made you proud to be an Islander?
I think you guys made a hard decision on the $29 million bond, and nobody wants to see debt, but I think I give you kudos because the interest rate on that was virtually nothing, right? It was close to 1% from what I read. Maybe I'm wrong, but that's a hard decision to make. I think the hardest decision, honestly, was when you guys pulled out of the building a couple of years ago, and there was obsestis, but I think that was the right thing to do because you took your, the city employees first, beyond just keeping them there.
Thank you. Mr. Becker.
Sorry, can you repeat what year, how many, how far back are we going?
He wants the worst decision Craig ever made.
Let's just say during your adult life, how about that?
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, I think that overall, I don't have a great answer for like a wrong decision for what the council has made. I think, you know, hindsight is 20/20 on, you know, how we could handle, you know, there's lots of things during the pandemic that I think we could have done differently. Yeah, I mean, I think, I think closing the building was, the City Hall was a tough, a tough decision that, you know, I don't know, this is why you get paid the big bucks here, to try to make these really hard decisions. I don't know, I, you know, I'm not answering the question. I wasn't, that wasn't in my notes here.
I think what I'm hearing is you think we did perfectly.
I think you have done, I think the council has, in the last, in the last two years, has done a very good job.
Okay, thank you.
I'll go.
Councilmember Andrell.
Far be it from me to give up an opportunity to ask a question. So just going forward over the next two to three years, and maybe this has been asked in a different way, but what do you think, what do you think are the three things that are most important to Mercer Island residents? And that, let's leave aside the public safety and maintenance building, because everybody knows that's a huge priority, or should be. What do you perceive as the community's priorities?
Okay, to you, Zach.
Public safety is a big one. Just when there was those meetups a couple of years ago with BLM, a lot of folks didn't know what to thank, and so I think the community has done a good job in making sure our police force is heard. I've seen a bigger presence in the community, and I think that's good. Number two, looking at the 2025 budget, I still see that there's fire pension on the budget. I would consider moving that off the budget to an insurance fiduciary to save the city some money. I don't really have the number three right in front of me, if that's okay.
Thank you. Mr. Becker.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think residents realize this is going to be the priority, but I think the financial situation is going to be a, an issue, I think, like seeing the budget proposal, the budget presentation from a few weeks ago, and what is the impact of that going to be, going to be on the city, and how do we make sure that that doesn't result in a deterioration of the city? I think that's going to be a huge topic. I think that when I talk with residents, everybody doesn't, has complaints about the town center. I think people complain about, this is number, I have a number two. They complain about it being drivable, they complain about it being walkable, they complain about it being bikeable, they, you know, want restaurants, they want, people want amenities. I think, you know, some of these, some of the requests that people have are, you know, don't work well together, so we have to figure out how do we, how do we balance these requirements that people, that people want, and obviously with the light rail opening hopefully soon, you know, that will impact it. So I think that's going to be a topic that people care about. You know, I'm going to throw out there, I think people, like I said earlier, like the civil discourse, like I talk to a lot of people who are, feel like politics is bad these days, and, you know, it's not locally, I mean, I think, I think it's driven from nationally and other levels, and I think people don't want to see that here. Like, we want to see Mercer Island, like, people should be talking to each other, we're all neighbors, we should all, you know, be nice to each other, and so I hear people that seem concerned about that, and how do we sort of lead by example in a way of, yeah, of having a kind community?
Perfect, thank you. All right. Not seeing any other questions. Council, would you, would anyone in the council like to convene into executive session to discuss qualifications of candidates, or would you like to open it up for nominations? Not hearing any interest in the executive session, so I'm open for nominations.
I would nominate Daniel Becker.
Okay. Nominations remain open until I receive no more nominations, and then I will close nominations.
So if...
Okay.
What happens if?
If we have a nomination.
If both are nominated, then we vote?
Then we're just going to have a vote, I'm going to guess.
Yeah, then I would vote, I would nominate Zach.
Okay. So I need a motion to open and close the nomination, or to close the nominations, so would you move to close the nominations?
Since there's no one else to nominate, I think that makes sense.
Okay, is there a second? So moved by Councilmember Andrell, seconded by Councilmember Reynolds, closed nominations. We have a nomination of both candidates. And City Clerk, I will ask you, what is the procedure for recording the vote?
So first, we will vote on the motion to close nominations. That will officially close the nominations. Then we will do a roll call vote. First, for the nomination for Mr. Becker. Second, for the nomination for Mr. McLean. The person to receive four votes would be selected.
Okay. Please call a roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum, and this is, you're voting to close the nominations.
Aye.
Councilmember Weinberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Weiger.
Aye.
Mayor Neese.
Aye.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Aye.
And Councilmember Andrell. Mr. Mayor, would you like me to move to calling the vote for the nomination for Daniel Becker?
Please do.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Just to clarify, this is a yes/no on Daniel?
This is a yes/no on Daniel Becker.
Aye.
Mayor Neese.
Aye.
Councilmember Weinberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Andrell.
Aye.
Councilmember Weiger.
Aye.
And Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, Daniel Becker received six votes. Because Daniel Becker received six votes, we do not need to vote on the nomination for Zachary McLean, and Daniel Becker is appointed to the City Council.
Okay, congratulations, Mr. Becker. Thank you, Mr. McLean. We appreciate your willingness to apply and provide a process for the citizens of the council. Hope to see you again in the future here.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Becker will be reaching out to you to get you sworn in in short order.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you both, actually.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, I appreciate it.
Go Orioles.
Is it game tonight?
Yeah.
Oh, jeez.
All right, our next item of regular business is AB 6696, the AWC Annual Meeting Voting Delegate. Council, the AWC Annual Meeting will be held on June 26th, my son's birthday. Councilmember Weinberg is attended, is attending the AWC Annual Conference and has volunteered to be the voting delegate. Are there any other council members interested in being the delegate?
Don't we get three votes?
We can put up to three members can attend as voting delegates, that is correct.
Would you like to be appointed twice?
Yes. If I can join Ted in supporting the board decision.
Okay, council, is there a motion to appoint Councilmember Weinberg and Councilmember Weiger as the voting delegate at the AWC Annual Meeting to be held on June 26, 2025?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Andrell, seconded by Councilmember Reynolds. I should ask if there's a third, is it anybody else going?
I am not planning on.
Okay. City Clerk, please call a roll.
Mr. Mayor, who is the move-in second?
Oh, boy. I think it was moved by Andrell, seconded by Reynolds.
I moved, I think.
Lisa Craig.
Thank you.
It flies out of your head so fast.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Councilmember Weiger.
Aye.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Aye.
Mayor Neese.
Aye.
And Councilmember Andrell.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Our next item of regular business is AB 6703, Councilmember Appointment to the Arch Focus Group. Council, there's an Arch Focus Group on July 11, 2025. Councilmember Reynolds has volunteered to participate in Arch Focus Group. Are there any other council members interested? Nope. Council, is there a motion to appoint Councilmember Reynolds as the Arch Focus Group on June 11, 2025?
So moved.
All right, moved by Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum, seconded by Councilmember Andrell. City Clerk, please call a roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Neese.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Aye.
Councilmember Andrell.
Aye.
Councilmember Weiger.
Aye.
And Councilmember Weinberg.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you both. All three, actually. Councilmember, council, our next item of regular business is AB 6697, the Public Hearing on Interim Regulations Related to Objective Design Review Standards, House Bill 1293 and Title 19 MICC, First Reading of Ordinance 25C 11. The public hearing is now open as of 6:06 PM. Individuals who register with the City Clerk's office before 4:00 PM today may make public comment on this agenda item. You'll be called by name when it's your turn to speak. Please speak audibly, state your name, city of residence for the record. Limit your comments to three minutes. City Clerk, do we have anyone signed up for public comment for the public hearing?
No one signed up to speak during the public hearing, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. As there is no testimony on this this evening, the public portion of this hearing is closed as of 6:06 PM, and we welcome CPD Director Jeff Thomas.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, council. Just want to note, you flew through that last item so quickly. Allison was all set to give you a 20-minute overview of Arch. Hey, we're making good time, so. That was a joke, by the way. Okay, so for tonight, we have a couple of items related to design review, and this is the first of the two. Council will recall back in April, April 15, I believe, Adam and I, who's going to join me here momentarily, we provided you an overview of the interim design regulations, and then we were able to make those publicly available on May 5, I believe, through a Let's Talk page that we set up. So those have been out there for a while, and hopefully some folks, we did have some activity on Let's Talk, so I know some folks have taken the time to review them, at least in part, so that's really good. Tonight is the ordinance and the first reading. Adam's going to walk you through a brief overview of what's in the ordinance and just a little bit of background, and then we'll get to any council questions that you may have, and we'll try and answer those. So with that, Adam, you can share your screen and take it away. Sorry, just a moment here. So, tonight, as Jeff mentioned, I'll start out by giving you a quick overview of the recent legislation. This will be a little bit of a refresher from the last time we touched this item back in April. Then I'll move to a summary of Ordinance 25C 11, and then we'll wrap up the first reading of that ordinance. I do have a copy of the ordinance ready to go, so as we're going through it, if you need to take a closer look at sections within that ordinance, just let me know, and I can open that up. To start with, some background on the statewide legislation. House Bill 1293 was adopted in 2023, and then amended the Growth Management Act, the GMA. It changes how the city's planning under that act to regulate building design.
It changes how the cities planning under that act, they regulate building design. We'll get into exactly what it changed here in a moment. The key thing is that cities in King County, Mercer Island among them, must adopt regulations to comply with this change by June 30 of this year. And the key requirement from House Bill 1293 is that design standards must be clear and objective. There's a couple of things that the bill defines as clear and objective. First, a design standard, a clear and objective design standard must include one or more ascertainable guideline, standard, or criterion by which an applicant can determine if their proposed building design would meet that standard. So it has to have some kind of measurable component to it. Also, a clear and objective design standard may not result in a reduction of density, height, bulk, or scale below what's generally applicable in the given cell. This one doesn't necessarily affect our standards as much. That first measurable piece prompted most of the changes in Ordinance 25C 11. And then finally, the bill requires that any design review process cannot include any more than one public meeting. Currently, our design review process includes both a study session with the design commission prior to application, and then a public hearing with the design commission after the public hearing. Ordinance 25C 11 would remove that study session, that pre-application study session, but it would keep the public hearing with the design commission as we move to. A quick overview of Ordinance 25C 11, this is an interim ordinance to comply with these state requirements, and that, it would become effective on June 30 within the deadline set by the state. And that interim ordinance would establish interim regulations that would be effective for up to one year unless the city either renews those regulations or replaces that with permanent regulations. As Jeff mentioned, a draft of the amendments in this ordinance were made publicly available through the project page on Let's Talk on May 2nd, so they've been out for public comment for over a month now, and we have not received any written public comments on, on the draft. This is a pretty sweeping ordinance, and it would amend 25 sections of the Mercer Island SEC. I'll give a quick summary of where, which sections exactly would be amended, and then, as I mentioned, have the ordinance if we need to get into any specific section if you have any questions. In Ordinance 25C 11, the first exhibit, Exhibit A, is a work plan for adopting the permanent regulations. This is outlining how we're gonna eventually adopt those permanent regulations, which is a requirement in state law. Exhibit B would, would strike MICC 1906-120, which is the criteria of approval for design review. This section, we already kind of cover in the other sections in Chapter 1915, and so it was redundant, not necessarily needed here, so it's proposed to be struck. Exhibit C includes all of the amendments to Chapter 1911 of the city code, and these are the town center design standards, so those design standards specific to that area. And then Exhibit C would amend Chapter 1912 of the city code, which are the design standards for all of the zones outside of the town center. Exhibit E are the amendments to Chapter 1915, specifically two sections, 1915-060 Application and 1915-220. These are the amendments to remove that study session requirement, and again, we would maintain the public hearing, the pre-decision public hearing, design commission. And then finally, Exhibit F are some amendments to the definitions to ensure consistency with the changes that we made in the ordinance. So that is a very quick, brief overview of very large ordinance. If you have any questions, I can take those now. Just before we get into questions, I suppose, looking ahead at the next steps, a second reading of this ordinance for June 17. If adopted, at the second reading, the ordinance would become effective on 30th, and then work on those permanent regulations would follow based on that. So now, I can turn it over to any questions.
Perfect, thank you. All right, council, I'm gonna open it up to questions, I'm sure that there are many. I know Councilmember Reynolds, you had one that was late in the day, did you ever get answered?
Everything has been satisfactorily answered. If I can just make a comment, I wanted to thank the staff for their patience. I submitted a ton of questions, and I guess I do have one related question that I'll ask now, which is, one of the things I struggled with in my questions was that there were a lot of sections of this document that defined objectives, and the objectives were, in some case, it was clear to me, the purpose they served before the design standards were objective, because they're there to kind of communicate intent and perhaps give some guidance to the planning, design commission on how to interpret the rules. But when the standards are now supposed to be objective, it's not clear to me even still why, why we need objectives to clarify objective standards, if I can use the same word twice in a similar way. So for everybody else's benefit, and for me to rehear it, could you explain what those objectives are for?
Yeah, so the, a lot of the sections, particularly in Chapter 1911, start with an objective or a design vision section. Those are, would be retained under the, the changes in Ordinance 25C 11. They really do serve kind of, they're more of like a policy direction kind of statement, they don't establish any kind of like regulatory requirements. And so for this step, for the interim ordinance, rather than strike those, we left them in more or less in a no harm, no foul type of interpretation. Is that?
Yeah, so a quick follow-up, just to make sure I understand, so if somebody wanted to build a building that was consistent with the objective design standards, but inconsistent in some way with one of the objectives that is there as the preface, they'd be okay, the building would still be approved, is that correct?
I mean, in, in theory, yeah, because the, the standards are the standards, and the objectives are, that moves around.
Okay, that, thank you.
Okay. Counsel, I'm not seeing anything else, then I'm gonna ask staff if they can get to the text that I drew attention to earlier in the day, which is Design Elements, Section D, Paragraph 4, about affordable units and the similarity in size to market rate units. So counsel, this is part just kind of a reading and not understanding text, and then questioning why at a point in time did the council come up with this language. I've asked, I've asked staff to kind of outline two pass forward for us, one which is just to make the text more clear, and the other is to just take this language away about affordable units being smaller than the market rate equivalents in a building. And I don't have my laptop this evening because it's broken, but I think what we're looking at here is affordable units may, so this is the strike through with text meant to clarify it, is that right, Director Thomas? And, and so this would be if we wanted to keep this concept of affordable units can be up to 10% smaller, but no smaller than a list. And if we didn't want to do this, and this is like retaining the code as the code exists, we could just make affordable units comparable to market size units? And Adam, I don't know if you have language that could be shown that would show that?
Yes. This is the, this is another alternative.
And so one, one would set a floor, and it would just, sorry, one would just say that they're equal, and then the other would, would say that they can be within 10%, but set a floor. And I don't know if council wants to have a deeper discussion on this, maybe at second reading, and I just noticed that kind of before this meeting, the, the way it was written wasn't working either way, so it needs to be fixed. Councilmember Wyker?
Do both versions meet state law, Adam?
It would, both include a measurable component, and so we would be able to, they would fit that clear and objective standard.
So I asked Director Thomas what he has seen in, in communities that he's worked with, he's, he's seen actually language which is of this derivative, which they, the market rate and the affordable units would be on parity in size. I saw you, Lisa, Andrell, you?
I'm thinking about raising my, thinking about raising my hand, but I, I think I do like what's on the screen better than what's on the paper in front of me.
The parity, where?
The average.
Yeah. Councilmember Reynolds?
I just asked Mr. Mayor to, to clarify, there's some fairly significant wording changes here, but is, is the goal here is to say, instead of 90%, it's 100%? Is that what you're trying to get at?
Yeah, so although it can't really be 100% because you could have, you know?
At least 100%.
Of the average, basically, yeah. You know, if, if there was a blend of, you know, two bedrooms, three bedrooms, and there were five different three-bedroom units, they probably wouldn't all be the exact same square footage, so we have to come up with something.
Sure.
I'm, I'm looking for either, is there, is there interest in the parity option? I've, I've seen it from Lisa, I kind of like the parity option, the average option here.
I like what's on the screen.
Okay, so, great. So if we want to have, we want to amend, so I need to have a motion, right?
We would need to have a main motion on the floor before we could do the amendment.
Let me do that, all right. So, council, is there a motion to schedule ordinance number 25C 11 for second reading on June 17, 2025?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Weinberg, seconded by Councilmember Reynolds. That's just the motion. And then I'll move to amend the motion with the language that's on the screen.
Second.
And then seconded by Councilmember Wyker. And then City Clerk, I'll let you call the roll when you're ready.
Can I ask a question first?
Sure.
Jeff or Adam, were you able to kind of dig into this a little bit in terms of what is some of our neighbors do in this respect, or is this something we haven't had a chance to look at quite yet?
With the mayor and I spoke this afternoon, he asked roughly the same question. We have not dug into exactly what our neighbors are doing, however, I'm confident that a parity language here with size of units is something that would certainly be supportive of our, our folks over at Arch. And I've actually worked in a jurisdiction, not in the, the direct Seattle Metro Eastside area, but did work for a jurisdiction where affordable units were required, at that point in time at least, to be on par with market rate unit sizes. So it's, it's, we're not, we're not breaking new ground with this type of language.
I guess my question is, if you have, so if you have a difference between, you know, if you can build a smaller unit for the same cost as a larger unit, or if you have to build this, a unit of the same size as all the other ones, but they have to cost the same, so I don't, I don't know from a development perspective in terms of what is the best in terms of livability, is it better to have a slightly smaller unit, or to potentially have a unit that doesn't have nearly as nice finishes, or however else you would sort of, you would have to reduce the cost, at least in theory, of those, of those units?
Yeah. The, the 10% is, is a slim margin in terms of, you know, reducing how much, there's gonna be some cost difference between 100% size unit and a 90% size unit. The, you know, you're still putting plumbing and electrical into every unit, right? So it's not necessarily gonna be less plumbing, or less, less, less of other type features, you're gonna, you're gonna have a little less drywall, a little less square footage, but your, so, so there, there is some, there is going to be some marginal cost difference there. However, I do believe that, you know, the importance, this has been stressed previously, the importance of, this is why we came up with rules like this at some point in time, not only Mercer Island, but all other jurisdictions, to not have developers grossly undersizing affordable units where, you know, there becomes a significant difference. So that's where our original language came from, that is struck up here on the screen. I guess this isn't, this wasn't the original strike though, but we do, that's where the original language came from in our code, and I, I think as an interim regulation, this is inappropriate, either example for me works as appropriate language to have in our interim regulations, and we'll definitely have a chance to flesh this out further in a full legislative review that would also include the planning commission not too far down the road.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other? Councilman Reynolds?
Just to make sure I understand, I, I think this is the only section of the code that has comparability requirements, is that true? So for example, in three-bedroom unit, that the non-affordable ones could have three bathrooms, and the affordable ones could have one bathroom, for example, or the, the non-affordable ones could have high, high-end appliances, the non-affordable ones, or the affordable ones could have cheapo appliances, right?
Correct, this is, this is our, this is the size comparability, that's correct.
And that, and that's all there is in terms of comparability? Okay, thank you.
All right. City Clerk, please call the roll. This is on an amendment.
Correct. Councilmember Wyker?
Aye.
Councilmember Weinberg?
Aye.
Mayor Neese?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum?
Aye.
Councilmember Andrell?
Aye.
And Councilmember Reynolds?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Any discussion before we call the roll on the amended motion? No, go ahead.
Mayor, oh, wait, let me find the bright one. Mayor Neese?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum?
Aye.
Councilmember Andrell?
Aye.
Councilmember Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilmember Wyker?
Aye.
And Councilmember Weinberg?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, motion passes, that gets us to our next item of regular business, which is AB 6698, a briefing on design review alternatives. Welcome to CPD Director Jeff Thomas.
Thank you again, Mayor. So this item is related to the item you just completed in, in the ways in which our design review standards are changing to our clear and objectionable methods. Staff felt it was appropriate that we come and we brief you a little bit further on what that looks like, how, how this is gonna be changing, and to present you with an option to consider whether the council would be interested in changing the way these design reviews are processed and approved. So with that, Adam has a short presentation for you to run through this with, there were, there was an, excuse me, there was an exhibit to this agenda bill, a table of, I believe, about a half dozen examples, between different examples of how something would be looked at with the code as it has existed, but then how it will be changing with then these interim regulations that you just, you just discussed a moment ago. So Adam will run through, I think, one or two examples in his presentation, and we'll provide a brief overview of what we're talking about. So with that, Adam, go ahead and let's get started.
Thank you, Jeff. Our purpose tonight, we are asking for the council to indicate which approach to design review is preferred, whether you'd like to keep the design commission as the body that reviews design review, so to keep it as is, or to assign that design review authority to either the hearing examiner or the co-commission. As we just went through, House Bill 1293 is going to change a lot of the discretion that the design commission has during design review. A lot of our existing design regulations provide a lot of latitude for the design commission to interpret that standard and kind of tailor the requirements on a case-by-case basis. Now, under the updated code, under 25C 11, that ordinance. basis. Now, under the updated code, under 25C-11, that ordinance, that kind of design review is really just going to be much more of a, does this meet the code, yes or no, than an exercise in interpretation. Under the city code, there are three decision-makers that could be assigned the design review authority. There's the design commission, which currently has that authority, and then also the hearing examiner, which will take a look at the hearing examiner, what the hearing examiner does here at the moment, and then the code official. The design commission is a volunteer commission that, that ultimately, currently, does the design review. It's made up of seven members, and five of those members come from the design field such as architecture or landscape architecture, and then two of the members come from the public. They can be laypeople, just members of the community. The design commission holds a public hearing during the design review prior to issuing a decision on a given application. Also, under the old regulations, there was a requirement for a pre-application study session, but once we make the changes in ordinance 25C-11, that step of the process would be removed. The design commission, really, they're, the way they work under the existing code, they have this really wide discretion, and as we, as we move forward, that will be much narrower under the new code. The hearing examiner is another decision-maker established in the code. They are an independent decision-maker that cities can hire to handle quasi-judicial hearings. Currently, under, the city of Mercer Island has a hearing examiner, and they review certain type four land use reviews, such as like conditional use permits or preliminary land plots. These tend to be technical reviews with a high degree of complexity that also have a certain amount of public interest. And the hearing examiner conducts a public hearing on these matters prior to issuing a decision and then issue that decision. Usually, they're opted attorneys. There's somebody with training in the field that are, that have professional experience reviewing applications and issuing decisions for matters that require quasi-judicial hearings. The third decision-maker authorized by the code is the code official. This is the director of CPD or authorized as a mean, so somebody, city staff, such as myself. The code official is the review authority for all types one, two, and three land use reviews, with the exception of the final plot. And for all of those land use reviews, the code official reviews it, which means it does not typically include a pre-decision public hearing. These tend to be purely technical reviews for items that either do or don't meet the code with less of that kind of discretionary assessment. So our, I've kind of already covered most of the content on this slide, but I think the important thing to take away from this is that, you know, once our standards are clear and objective, the design review will primarily be non-discretionary. And we did include some examples, as Jeff mentioned, of how that review is going to change under the new code. There were six examples provided in the AB. I'll walk through one now, just for, to go through it, but I'm going to go through all of the examples from, from the agenda bill. So, under the amendments proposed in ordinance 25C-11, MICC 1911 130B2 will be amended so to simply state that signs indicating the location of parking available to the public are required, and that those signs must be placed at the entrance to the parking lot or parking garage. So under the existing standards, the design review process for this provision is simply, does this proposal include signage for a parking lot, and is it placed at the entrance and within that parking lot? And if the answer to both of those is yes, then that development can be approved. Under the, under the existing standards, the design commission will be able to review those and have input on how the signs are designed and where the signs might be placed. So there's, under the proposed standards, there's a lot, there's a lot less leeway. I think this is a good explanation of this thing that we've been talking about, of how discretion is really curtailed under the proposed standards. I have a couple more examples if you want to go through them, but I won't go through them right now, just if you want to ask. And then, looking ahead at the next steps, if the council would like to direct staff to change the design review authority, we will prepare an ordinance and bring that back to you. Again, we would need to know who the authority should be assigned to, whether it's the design commission, which would be making no change, the hearing examiner, or the code official. That concludes my presentation.
Okay. Just a quick follow-up. I understand that if the council's will is to, you know, sunset the design commission and ascribe these decisions to either the code official or the hearing examiner, the staff is prepared to bring those changes back at June 17th, like, ready to adopt in an emergency ordinance? That would basically relieve the backlog of design commission work?
We would, we would be prepared to be back on June 17th with an ordinance for council's consideration, that is correct.
And that would be all the code changes necessary to kind of effectuate that change?
That is one option. We, in discussing with the city attorney here around midday today, we may have another option, which may short-form that a little bit, so we're going to, that, we will definitely have an ordinance back on the 17th that would put this into play for the city council if you wish to pass it.
Okay.
There could be a couple different ways of doing it. We'll pick the best.
Great. I'll open it up to council. Councilmember Andorall.
Yeah, thanks for your presentation. Approximately how many design review decisions occur every year?
Business has been slower in the last handful of years. There's no doubt about that. We do more administrative design review as authorized in the current code than we do design commission reviews and approvals. We have had this in the last handful of months here. We have had some study sessions, but they haven't necessarily transacted. We've had three or four study sessions that haven't necessarily transacted to full-blown design approval applications as of yet. So business is, business is moderate at best, maybe a little on the slower side.
May I ask a follow-up? So in the design review, the study sessions that you've done, is it your view that those would have been unnecessary under the new ordinance?
Completely unnecessary.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Councilmember Weicher.
So I get the key difference between the hearing examiner and the code official is a public hearing and no public hearing, and after Councilmember Andorall's saying, it sounds like the public hearing isn't really going to do anything, anything, anyway, given the standards and state law. So my question then is, what is the cost to send someone to the hearing examiner versus staying with our code official, and how much more time would that take to an applicant? So cost and time of those two alternatives?
Sure. Let me start with time, and we'll go backwards. So the, the time difference essentially for a public hearing, the code requires a 30-day notice of a public hearing for land use matters. So that in itself is the delta between doing a code official design review versus a hearing examiner design review. In terms of the cost, we, we are operating on the goal of 100% cost recovery with permits. So the way our fee schedule has been set up for the last couple of years is a deposit-driven system, where we take a deposit for a land use review or permit. We bill off of that, and then if we go over that amount, we do bill the customer at the end of the process. So with, so we do have that 100% target in mind. So the, the difference in cost then between, again, between the two processes would be the, the cost of the hearing examiner versus the cost of staff, and then any extra administrative cost to notice the hearing and publish the hearing examiner's decision.
So staff capacity then? We could do this within 30 days, and we have staff, or could contract out to staff? Like, last I checked, we don't have a lot of free time.
Right, right. We don't have a lot of free time. That is true. In terms of, you know, with the hearing examiner, I would say the staff effort is comparable with the two processes. And the reason for that is because we prepare a staff report that is presented to the hearing examiner. So staff report to prepare a decision in an administrative review versus a staff report to present to the hearing examiner for the hearing examiner's review and consideration. So they're, they are comparable, in my opinion.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
Jeff, do you have, if you're comfortable, do you have an opinion on which option between the hearing examiner or the code official would be most efficient for the city?
I think from an efficiency, you know, the one, the one part of the process is that the 30-day notice, public hearing notice, is not something you typically see in other jurisdictions. It's usually a 14- or a 21-day public hearing notice, sometimes a 10-day. So from an efficiency standpoint, the hearing examiner process, in my estimation, would generally take a little bit longer, and that noticing component is a big part of that. The flip side of that, though, is by having the hearing examiner do the, the role that the design commission has, has done for many years on Mercer Island, we are retaining that, that public participation component. And, you know, we do have people come to those hearings to, when they, when they are held, to, you know, express their opinion on a particular proposal. So I, I think, I think there's value in that. I think there's value, at least for the time being, in if there is going to be a change made in giving strong consideration to the hearing examiner process and retaining that, that public participation component, or at least the ability to have it. And that can always be evaluated at some point down the road in the future. If we find we're not getting a lot of public participation with the hearing examiner on these sorts of things, if that was what the council wishes to do, we can always look at, at changing it down the road at some point, so.
City Manager Bond.
I came on screen.
I have no laptop, so it's the only way I know.
All right. And I just want to be really, really direct, counsel. Our recommendation is that we utilize the hearing examiner for this work, not the staff or the code official. If we identify through the pursuit of permanent regulations, and then we've got a whole body of work here, something that would be appropriate for the staff, we may come back with that recommendation. Otherwise, we really see the benefit of having this work separate from the staff, separate from me, and, and at a distance from the council as well. And I won't say anymore on that, but I wanted to be very clear about our position on this.
I think on that note, you know, this is, I'm not commenting on whether legislature should have made this change or not, but the fact is that they did. So, you know, we obviously need to comply with that. My sense here is that the, the hearing examiner is better positioned to sort of receive those sort of public comments that people have been used to giving in the past. You know, this is a big change no matter what, but I think if we can at least have that outlet for folks to raise concerns or, or alternatives, or whatever, whatever they may feel is appropriate, that, that is pretty important. So I, I do think we should move this to the hearing examiner. It just seems to be the sort of natural step here in terms of the progression.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Staff did a great job at trying to objectify the, the requirements, but my sense is that no matter how good they are, no matter how perfect the job is, there will be some things that are going to be somewhat open to interpretation. It'll be impossible to make everything completely black-white. So let's say we give it to the hearing examiner or the code official or whoever we decide to assign it to. Under any of these systems, is there any grounds for appeal, or is it, decision made, you lose?
There is, yes.
Go ahead, Adam.
A stat, a code official decision or a hearing examiner decision may be appealed.
And who is it appealed to?
It depends on who's being appealed. The hearing examiner would hear the appeal of a code official decision, and then Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, the hearing examiner decision can be appealed to this.
That's correct.
Interesting. Okay, thank you.
City Attorney Park.
I was just going to say, Mayor, Mr. Mayor, that I do agree with Planner and the CPD Director that the appeal of the hearing examiner decision will go as a, a Lupa decision, a Lupa appeal before the King County Superior Court.
Okay, thank you. Was it, no?
No, I was just going to say, if I make one more comment, I, I tend, I was tending toward the hearing examiner option early on, and it sounds like it's being confirmed all around.
One other quick question?
Yeah, Councilmember Reynolds.
Somebody, I forgot who, I think it was Councilmember Weicher perhaps, asked about cost, and you made the point that it's covered 100% by the, by the applicant, which is great. But how much is it costing the applicant? Is there, is there a fee to go before the hearing examiner? Do they pay for the hearing examiner's time? And is it, you know, what would, what would a typical case cost for a, for a commercial development?
I don't have those numbers right available ready tonight. I'd be happy to follow up with the council in writing the email with an example for it.
I, I'm assuming that the hearing examiner would probably be a little bit more, though? Would you speculate?
Well, let's not do that. I see City Manager Bond has popped on.
Yeah, I think it's important to clarify that fees are paid to cover the cost of staff time or the hearing examiner. So there's fees associated with both. And, Council, you have a staff in the planning department that already has a full load. So what, what we're trying to do is optimize the tools we have and not add staff to take on, you know, hearing responsibilities. I do believe it is, it is more efficient that hearing examiner charges us an hourly fee. We have several hearing examiners. We use one primarily for land use issues. This is his specialty. He's, runs a tight ship. He's very efficient. I'd be happy to share his contract with you or his rates, but I just want to clarify, there's fees either way.
I think it's also important to understand that an applicant, right now, has some requirement to be in front of the design commission and the hearing examiner. And if we direct them to the hearing examiner, they can just do everything there. And so there's, they're paying for their architects to present pre-design and then design meetings, so that's two months apart, two design meeting, assuming they get a quorum, which has not been the case. So what I'm hearing actually from applicants is that there's considerable delay with the design commission element and efficiency by moving it to the hearing examiner, but yeah, it's pick your poison. Councilmember Weicher?
I'll just add, we have a fee schedule for that on our website as well.
Of course we do. Okay, Council, I'm not seeing a whole lot of interest in sending this to staff, not from staff or from council. So I'm going to, I'm going to entertain a motion. Council, is there a motion to direct the city manager to prepare an ordinance to sunset the design commission and reassign design review decisions to the hearing examiner for city council review on June 17, 2025?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum, seconded by Councilmember Andorall. Any discussion? City Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Neese?
Aye.
Councilmember Andorall?
Aye.
Councilmember Weinberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Reynolds?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum?
Aye.
And Councilmember Weicher?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right. Our next item of regular business is AB 6700, new dwellings in existing buildings HB 1042 and Title 19 MICC. First reading of ordinance number 25C-12, and we welcome again CPD Director Jeff Thomas.
Thank you, Mayor. Adam is with me again for this item, and we also will have Planning Commission Chair Thompson available at the end of the short staff presentation to provide any additional comments on behalf of the planning comments on behalf of the Planning Commission that he may wish to provide and also to answer any questions that you may have of either staff or the Planning Commission Chair. So with that, Adam, why don't we just jump straight into this presentation and we'll go from there. Okay, thanks. This will be the last time you have to see this. So for tonight, for the presentation, I'll give you a quick overview of House Bill 1042, provide you with the Planning Commission's recommendation, and then that will complete the first reading of ordinance 25C12. House Bill 1042 was adopted in 2023 by the Washington Legislature and enacted RCW 35A 21 or 40. This new section of the state code requires that all code cities, which includes Mercer Island, allow the development of new housing in existing buildings in any zone where commercial or mixed uses are allowed. And it also defines an existing building as a building that received certificate of occupancy at least three years prior to the permit application, the supplemental of the permit application at housing needs. There are some changes to our development regulations in the city code. Those must be adopted by June 30th of this year to comply with House Bill 1042. And the Planning Commission recommendation is to adopt a code section that would comply. And this would be, this would be permanent regulations to, to address this legislation. Looking at the state requirements, they, we are required, we cannot limit density in this type of development. We can't limit density up to 50%, more than what is allowed by the underlying zone, provided that development would be constructed entirely within the existing building envelope. Cities also may not impose parking requirements on the addition of new dwelling units, except for, cities can require that existing parking be maintained. No new parking spaces, but we can't require the retention of existing parking spaces. Cities also may not impose permit or design standards that are more restrictive than those that apply to residential development. So if residential developments are permitted outright, you can't require a conditional use permit for new dwellings in an existing building. Cities also may not prohibit addition of housing units in any part of a building, except for they can require ground floor, commercial, or retail in a building that's along a major pedestrian corridor. Finally, the cities cannot require the unchanged portions of the building, so this, the portions of the building that don't have new dwelling units in them. We can't require that those sections of the building come up to the current energy code. So those are the state requirements. Oh, sorry, there's two more requirements. Also, cities cannot deny a building permit for new dwelling units in the existing building due to nonconformity. And cities also cannot require transportation concurrency or an environmental study, ACPA, environmental review for the addition of new, new dwelling units in the existing building. The Planning Commission recommendation would comply with those requirements. On April 23rd, the Planning Commission held a public hearing and made the recommendation, which was included with Agenda Bill 6700 as Exhibit 1. That's, the recommendation would adopt the new section in the Development Code in Chapter 1906 of Mercer Island City Code, and that would comply with the recently amended state law. The Planning Commission Chair is here tonight to speak to the recommendations and answer any questions you might have about the Planning Commission process. And then if you have any questions about the ordinance, we can, we can take a look too. Just really quick, before I turn it over to Chair Thompson, I just wanted to point out the next steps. We're planning a second reading of ordinance 25C12 for June 17th. And then if adopted at that second reading, this ordinance would become effective on June 30th. And that concludes my presentation. Turn it over to Chair Thompson this time and present the Commission recommendation.
Okay. Welcome, Chair Thompson.
Thanks, thanks, Adam.
Chair Thompson, can you please get closer to the microphone?
Yes, I guess I can. First, I'd like to update the council on the Planning Commission. Since some council members expressed concern when the new reconstituted commission was appointed, that the personalities would clash, and I'm happy to report that the commission is getting along very well. The members are both cordial and respectful, even when working on significant recommendations like the new park zone. I think going to the in-person meetings was critical and going from seven to five members, having all commission members have expertise. The CPD has implemented a practice that requires commissioners to submit proposed amendments in writing two weeks before the meeting. That's really been helpful so that people don't go on tangents and we know what we're talking about. I have to mention the patience of Deb Estrada as we get up to Robert's Rules of Order. So I just wanted to mention that. It's going very well down there. On this ordinance, this is the first one that we have finished, and it came to the commission without any pre-planning session or discussion because staff followed the council's direction to do the legally minimum necessary, comply with the state law, and Adam's presentation, I thought, was excellent. The two changes we made to staff recommendation, the first was Commissioner Gibson. He moved that we require the building to maintain the existing parking and that be mandatory and not discretionary with the code official. Since the building envelope cannot be increased, there isn't really any other use for that lot area that being used for parking. And as we learned from the new Town Center Parking Management Plan, people move to suburbia, they tend to buy a car. So that was a unanimous. The other amendments were proposed by Commissioner Neese. Commissioner Neese is a very qualified architect, very thoughtful, and he tends to work on very high-end residential projects. He did not know about the council's directive to do the legal minimum necessary and thought the ordinance might as well make life more pleasant for the tenants who would essentially probably be living in small units or micro pods. There was unanimous agreement among the commission to approve Commissioner Neese's proposed amendments, except the last proposed amendment. That grants 20 feet of additional height, if it's still within the zones height maximum, to allow for access stairs or an elevator shaft or rooftop deck. The ADA would require the elevator, you'd have to blow through the roof, and it's about 20 feet for that. I was the lone dissenting commission member because I thought that exceeded the council's directive, but at the same time, the likelihood that a property owner with 20 remaining feet of height in a zone would use that for an elevator shaft, for a roof deck, for affordable housing is pretty unlikely. I'd like to address two recurring themes in this ordinance, and that's, they're in the same upzoning bills that will be coming back, and of course, you, you've been studying that isn't quite in the ordinance, but you learn these things when you have architects and, and people on the commission. The total estimated number of buildings in the entire region that might utilize this state law, according to the experts, is zero to seven in Seattle and zero to three in Bellevue because there is no way for a property owner or builder to make a profit for the following reasons. The gross floor area doesn't increase. The housing, which is measured by the number of bedrooms, does not increase, which is why a three-bedroom unit, of course, rents for more than one-bedroom units. 50% more units require 50% more kitchens and bathrooms when those are the most expensive rooms to build in any dwelling. Converting a commercial building to residential will require a complete remodel of the fire systems and materials since people will be sleeping there. And increasing the number of dwelling units 50% will require complete updates to the plumbing and electrical systems in the building, and those will have to be brought up to current code, which always is expensive. And then, of course, there's just the construction costs of remodeling every unit. So not earth-shattering ordinance, I'm afraid. I think Commissioner Neese, since he works with these high-end builds, raises some really good points that we're going to be going over. The first is that the cost of construction today, including financing, permits, and impact fees, means that it is almost impossible to sell new construction for what it costs to build. Builders cannot build new, non-subsidized, affordable housing even if they wanted to. That is not a big deal when wealthy couples build a new house as an emotional investment, but it is a big deal for builders and developers if you want them to build on speculation, and it's why permit applications for projects on spec are down significantly, especially multifamily. The fact is, is the new construction displaces the older, existing, more affordable housing because the builders buy low and sell high, especially if they plan to demolish the existing structure. So this is a theme, you've been dealing with it. I'm not telling you anything you don't know. We all want more affordable housing, but what we are reality doing is we are destroying it through displacement. So, I mean, that's it. I don't know if there's any questions. I know that you've seen this and you did the interim, but...
Well, we appreciate the report and the work on this, and I'll ask counsel, are there any questions of Chair Tom, Thompson?
No questions, but thanks, Dan, for the report on the Planning Commission and kudos on running a functional ship.
It's, you know, I have to tell you, I've really appreciated it because of the expertise. Anthony Perez and Nazim Neese are architects, skilled architects. They bring things that a lawyer's going to miss, especially a lawyer who's familiar with land use. You know, I'm better at code language and putting it in there, but they see things. And Kate Accus has been very helpful because at King County, she does a lot of complex permitting with different agencies, and that, that's been very helpful, too. So actually, I'm enjoying it. I enjoy the people, and of course, staff have really, really been helpful.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? All right. Counsel, is there a motion to schedule a second reading of ordinance number 25C-12 for June 17, 2025?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. It was moved by Councilmember Andrell, seconded by Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum. All right. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Weiger.
Aye.
Councilmember Weinberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Councilmember Andrell.
Aye.
Mayor Neese.
Aye.
And Councilmember Reynolds.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right. We're going to rejigger a little bit here. I'm going to have some folks move up to the front of the room. Our next item of regular business is AB 6701, Review and Discussion of Schematic Design for Public Safety and Maintenance Facility. While we get rejiggered, we're going to welcome City Manager Jesse Bond, who is not quite ready, but we will have mountains of grace.
All right. Good evening again. I loved the intro, Mr. Mayor, mountains of grace. We will strive for that tonight. It is good to be back in front of you, city council. Again, I am Jesse Bond, your city manager. We are here tonight with a very comprehensive recap update and overview of the schematic design on the new public safety and maintenance facility. I have quite a few staff here this evening. They are in a better position to answer questions about detailed operations on the police side of the house or the public works side of the house, also customer service and IT GIS. I will, I will introduce the staff, then I will have Aaron introduce his team. All the way to the left is Acting Police Chief Michelle Bennett. She has a couple colleagues somewhere back in the room that will be joining us as well. To my right is Jason Kitner, Chief of Operations. He'll be assisting with the public works discussion. He also has team members here. A reminder that Ali Speitz, our Chief of Administration oversees customer service and IT GIS, and she'll be supporting us in that regard. Aaron, did you want to do introductions before we dive in?
Good evening. My name is Aaron Young. I'm a partner with Northwest Studio. We're the lead architects and urban designers for the public safety and maintenance facility, and I'm joined tonight by David Cutler, a partner in the practice, and Louis Peiser, one of the lead architects in the practice.
All right. And I would be remiss if I didn't introduce Robbie Cunningham, Adam, who's sitting right behind me and is one of our senior team members and is the project lead on this project. And I really, truly keeps things going. Thank you, Robbie. All right, let's jump to the next slide. Counsel, we have a really sizable slide deck tonight, and it's intended to take you through the journey of where we started. We'll skip all the, we'll, we'll skip most of the what happened, but then we'll walk you through the design process, remind you of how we got to where we are, introduce the schematic design as it sits today, talk through design strategies and, and project actions. I've received a lot of questions from you. We're going to endeavor to answer those tonight. And then we have very detailed slides on the project cost estimate. Again, we put a comprehensive slide deck together. We won't go through every slide in detail, but we will publish it to the packet because we know there's a lot of interest in this project. We'll publish this to the website as part of the packet, excuse me. Next slide, and the next one. So just a reminder to set the stage, especially if anyone is just picking up and learning about this project for the first time. City Hall closed permanently in 2023. It was after we discovered some asbestos in the HVAC system. We didn't know was there. We took quite a bit of time. You may recall, six months we spent together analyzing what it would take to basically replace the HVAC system and do all the necessary upgrades, ultimately deciding that the life of the building, its, its age, the system's age, the fact that it is not a Level 4 facility, there were structural issues that it was, it was time to move on from that facility. Since that time, the staff are, the staff that were working out of that building are working in a variety of locations. Police is working out of trailers in the city hall parking lot. Some of our staff are in hidey holes here at the community center. Some, we have squeezed into the public works building. So that is the background on the city hall closure. Next slide, please. In a similar vein, the, the public works building and the associated yard is also an aging facility. Similar to city hall, the council started looking at replacing these buildings in the 2010s, and it really came home to roost here more recently as we started experiencing additional problems with the facility. We have a failing HVAC system, failing electrical systems. We have staff working in maintenance bays that were never intended to be offices. The facility itself is undersized, poorly laid out, as is the yard. So collectively, we made the decision, we, meaning the city council and certainly the staff, were involved in that, in directing us to, to design this new building, which combines teams that are essential operations and public safety teams into one building that will be a Level 4 facility. And we'll talk more about what Level 4 means in just a bit. Next slide. All right, so I've already covered some of this. You know, we have displaced staff in temporary facilities. The public works building, we did make the decision to make a modest investment in that building to keep it going, essentially buying ourselves another five to seven years while we work on the new facility. And so that brings us to tonight's discussion. And again, it's a big slide deck, but Aaron is going to go through it quickly. I'll look for opportunities to break and discuss... I'll look for opportunities to break and discuss at natural points. Aaron, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I'm going to start this conversation with a look back at the design process. To date, the process has included two phases of work. The pre-design phase, which was completed in 2024, that confirmed general programming and the conceptual framework for the facility. Following that phase, we shifted to the schematic design phase, and that phase focuses on translating those concepts into preliminary plans, identifying overall scope, layout, and key features, and identifying certain elements like early cost estimates, and then the use of those estimates to conduct value engineering analysis reviews to enhance project efficiency and overall value. We had a really great 2024 in this project, working with city staff on departmental space relationships and programming exercises all the way through the police department and the emergency manager's office. We were able to tour select facilities with city staff, council members, to understand how those facilities operated, maybe some lessons learned from those facilities. In addition to bi-weekly project meetings with city staff, we held quite a number of workshops with city staff, the police department, emergency managers' office, customer service, IT and G I S, to really gain a really detailed understanding of their programming needs and how they operate on a day-to-day basis. These programming sessions were held in the Mercer Island Community Event Center and attended by all staff so that we could really understand their needs. As we mentioned, we had the opportunity to tour a range of sites, but we also came to the Mercer Island City Hall site with our consultant team multiple times so that we could walk through with them and understand site conditions and talk about opportunities and constraints on the ground. With city staff and council members, we toured regional police department facilities in Shoreline, at the University of Washington, and at Kirkland to understand what they feel they did right, what they think they can do better, so that we can incorporate those ideas and notions into the design of this facility. We also toured regional public works facilities to understand office spaces, shared workspaces for crews, very important circulation and yard accommodations for large vehicles and equipment and rough-and-tumble and dirty operations, covered storage needs, lighting and security, and shared spaces for meals and team building. And that brought us into the work on the schematic design. As an overview and in this project brief, the PSM building will provide space for the Mercer Island Police Department, the Emergency Operations Center, the Public Works Department, IT and G I S departments, and the customer service counter, which hosts customer service, utility billing, and permits. The project encompasses seven of the nine acres of land on the city hall site and provides two primary buildings, related site structures, and covered areas to house and protect MIPD staff and vehicles, and public work staff, vehicles, heavy equipment, tools, raw materials, waste, and recyclables. The project will be a risk category four structure, and this type of facility is a lifeline to the community in the most extreme circumstances, and the departments proposed to be working out of this facility are critical to remain operational during an event. Risk category four structures are designed to remain in operation during events. The project budget is estimated at $103,900,000, including facility construction costs, site construction costs, project soft costs, and state and local tax. This aerial photograph of the existing site is, I'm showing this for reference purposes so that we can orient ourselves. North in this image is to the right of the page, and this site plan illustrates the proposed layout for facilities and operational areas. Buildings and covered operational areas are consolidated on the eastern portion of the site, opening the western portions for yard functions and maintaining public and staff parking and public facing functions towards Southeast 36th Street. The building is organized from north to south. Now, in this image, north is to the left, from public parking to a public entrance with customer service counters in the public safety maintenance building, with covered police department, public works operations behind, and the operations building following to the south. The lower and upper yard, which host functions such as fueling stations, raw materials, material and equipment laydown, the decant facility, waste and recycling, and organics are located further south in the site, in the wooded area. Throughout this design process, there were five design strategies that emerged from site observation, operational and programmatic reviews with city staff. The first related to protecting equipment, vehicles, and staff and promoting efficient There were five photographs around the existing site and the yard that highlighted a challenging condition. One was a lack of protection for Mercer Island Police Department functions. This photograph illustrates the lack of adequate weathering cover and protection at the old Sallyport adjacent to the now-closed city hall building that was used by the Mercer Island Police Department for the secure transfer of in custody individuals. The second photograph illustrates the absence of weathering cover, officer protection, and the lack of a secure transfer area at the temporary trailers that currently house the Mercer Island Police Department. Further into the public work site, we can see some of the conditions within that yard where existing structures designed 45 years ago are inadequately sized for today's vehicles and equipment, resulting in continuous exposure to the elements. And that lack of weathering cover simply means that city staff have to clear operational areas, they have to dig themselves out of a weather event before they can mobilize to serve the community. So the first strategy was to cover more vehicles, equipment, and work areas to protect staff, equipment, and promote efficient operations, no matter the weather. This diagram in the blue line illustrates the location of weathering cover and roof structures over buildings. This structure protects the police department and public works vehicles, equipment, and staff, and there are two views that highlight this design condition. The first is a view at the weathering cover at the police department deployment entrance. This entrance is located on the south side of the public safety and maintenance building. You can see the overhead cover. This is behind a secure perimeter, which we'll talk about in a moment. In this area includes activities such as shift change, evidence transfer and processing, and in custody transfers.
And Aaron, may I just interrupt for a moment? So counsel, you're seeing some of these images for the first time. I just want to make sure, you know, these are renderings, which means they're attempting to depict what is in your schematic design. However, they have some limitations. The scale can often be a little bit off, and so what we've done in the slide deck is tried to add the scale so you know that this is, how tall is this roof, for example? This is a...
At the backside of this roof, 26 feet to the underside of the structure.
So there could just be some skewing. The renderings are evolving still, and we'll continue to update them as we meet with you. So just one little asterisk on these images that you're seeing and what their purpose is.
And I know we do our best with entourage, like people and vehicles, but sometimes it can be tough when there are specific logos to work into things. The second image depicts the weathering cover at the very southern end of the site. In the right in this image, we can see the public works operations building. This new facility covers equipment vehicles in this area, including trailers and large oversized vehicles that load in and out of the operations building on that southern side. This cover includes a 17-foot minimum clearance at the very southern end. This is calibrated to reach the same height, 16 feet 8 inches, which is the Wash State minimum for underpass clearances for vehicles, and it allows the city to drive things like dump trucks with salt spreaders and other things underneath that, the very lowest end. The second strategy dovetails with the first. It is to co-locate buildings with covered areas for operational efficiency and for structural cost effectiveness. You can see in the brown highlight in this image, those are the weathering covers. The buildings are in gray. We've organized these buildings so that they open directly out onto spaces, covered spaces that front each side of the building. For example, this view illustrates the covered area between the operations building at the left and the public safety and maintenance building at the right. They're positioned alongside these for efficient flow. On the right-hand side, you can see the secure fencing that encloses the police department parking and deployment area, and on the left-hand side, you can just catch a glimpse inside the warehouse at the lowest level, the bottom floor of the operations building. This view illustrates that interior of the warehouse within the operations building, looking out towards that covered area and the PSM building in the distance. This warehouse serves a primary function for the receipt, management, holding, and distribution of materials, tools, and equipment into crews who are loading up vehicles that are parked directly outside of it on a daily basis, excuse me, and often twice a day. Parking and vehicular circulation. The current city vehicle parking on the site is illustrated on this map. The 1980s layout simply did not anticipate the current quantity of vehicles, and as a result, many vehicles are parked in drive aisles or in front of other vehicles or equipment, and there are a few images that highlight this condition. The first relates to the temporary facilities for Mercer Island Police Department. There's a lack of clarity in this parking area where police department vehicles are parked adjacent to public and staff vehicles. Parking for police vehicles, excuse me, is marked but not secured, and circulation routes are mixed with publicly accessible drives. On the public works site, next to the public works building, the site is quite congested. This photograph depicts existing vehicle parking that encroaches on areas required for drive aisles and maneuvering, and in some cases, multiple vehicles must be moved simply to access or maneuver equipment needed. You'll note many of the vehicles parked in front of storage bays, vehicles parked in front of the maintenance bay, vehicles parked in the loading areas. All of those have to be moved and shuffled around to simply gain access to some of the equipment and tools that the public works crews need to work, and all of that takes time throughout the day, resulting in a loss of efficiency throughout the day. The existing vehicle circulation is primarily two ways and everywhere across the site. This map illustrates vehicular circulation routes. The combination of two-way circulation and dead-end legs across a tight site, as well as ad hoc parking, results in a number of vehicular circulation conflicts that really impact daily operations. Now, one-way circulation reduces potential vehicle conflicts, and we use the example of a roundabouts, one-way roundabout versus a four-way intersection, that there's an exponential decrease in the potential vehicle conflict points with a four-fold reduction, in fact, in vehicle conflict points. And so a design strategy emerged that said, wherever possible, prioritize one-way circulation and normalize vehicle parking to reduce conflicts and operational impact. Now, normalizing parking means let's not customize the parking spaces, let's make a one-size-fits-all so that public work staff or PD staff aren't having to find the right spot to fit the right vehicle. They can simply park in any one that's available. Now, that vehicular circulation overview organizes public and staff vehicles entry through a reconstituted drive on the eastern side of the site into a public parking area marked in yellow along Southeast 36th Street. The western drive is reserved for city vehicles and moves directly through and into the site. That is a two-way drive. It is one of only two in the entire site. You'll see the second two-way drive, which moves up towards the upper yard in this view. All of the circulation on the site is one-way. The western inbound lane is controlled by an access gate. The police department parking is also controlled by an access gate, and that two-way drive guides vehicles into the project site, into the public works area where a one-way loop is used to manage circulation between the eastern and western halves of the site. And this view illustrates that western driveway. You can see that existing kind of curving alignment for use by the police department and public works vehicles. Police department vehicles park just south of the public safety maintenance building. A total of 36 spaces are provided with a secure enclosure for those vehicles. As we toured regional police departments, one of the topics that came up was the security of the area that police are operating in within their vehicles in that deployment area. And this photograph depicts one of the parking areas on our tours and a deployment area that, while secured by the perimeter fencing, faced an adjacent two-story parking garage with a low concrete wall, and it was a constant point of note for all the officers. They mentioned it to us several times. They're constantly on alert for who, if anyone, might be up behind that wall. It's sort of the perfect place to sort of sit up there and cause trouble. So there were operational security concerns with that condition. In the schematic design, the police department vehicles, equipment, and facility entrances are located within that secure enclosure to provide for the safety and security of officers, evidence, and individuals in custody. Now, that secure enclosure is also undercover and within a complex that is controlled by the city. So this is sort of a secure perimeter within a secure perimeter. Access to that perimeter is separated from the remainder of the facility by a gated enclosure. For public works vehicles, like we mentioned, parking areas are normalized. The majority of spaces are 10 feet by 20 feet to accommodate the vast majority of public works trucks and cars. There are, in total for the fleet, actually 71 now vehicles needed. 86 spaces are provided on site. Public works operates seven trailers, and seven spaces for those trailers are provided. I should mention that on the previous slide, we would note that, whoops, I think that, back up, there are three boat trailers for the Mercer Island Police Department. Those are also housed with the public works trailer spaces just for efficiency, so we can group like with like. Over there are six spaces needed for oversized vehicles. Eight are provided. Those six are needed to be covered and semi-heated, and eight spaces that are covered and semi-heated are provided in the indoor operations parking area. Off of Southeast 36th Street for public and staff parking, there's a total of 79 staff, not counting the two volunteers identified by the emergency management office. So 79 total staff that would be occupying the building, and 112 spaces have been provided, leaving a rough total of about 33 additional spaces for public and growth in staff over time or seasonal work. Within that public parking area, access is through a two-way drive off of Southeast 36th. There's a diversion lane built in on the western drive for folks who might enter through the wrong way and can be stopped at the gate and diverted back to public parking. And this view illustrates the relationship between the public parking lot, the staff parking, and the main entry to the public safety and maintenance building. When we talk about site organization, we first started to look at the array of tools, materials, waste, and other elements that are stored and housed and used on the current public work site. This map of the existing public work site is a product of a site walk and illustrates one of the challenges faced by public work staff. Yard operations are constrained by facilities designed 45 years ago, as we mentioned, and they have forced an ad hoc organization of not only vehicles but materials and equipment on site. This photograph illustrates that typical parking condition, parked wherever space permits, resulting in tight conditions with limited maneuverability. This also results in vehicles and equipment that are stored obstructing other vehicles and equipment, and these cause operational delays when vehicles are parked in front of snowplows, and we have to dig everybody out of the snow in order to move the vehicle in order to get to the plow. And in one example of material storage challenges, this diagram highlights the storage of raw materials like salt, sand, gravel, and rock that are stored in three different areas of the yard, just simply by virtue of need, requiring trips between these locations to gather and redistribute materials for use. So if we can work on consolidating those materials, then we make a much more efficient yard, and we get more crews out into the field for longer during the shifts. And building organization. So, well, that slide is in the wrong spot. So this resulted in a design strategy that said, let's organize the site into zones for clear and efficient use. And this zoning moves from the most public, where the site... And this zoning moves from the most public, where the site and building entries are visible and easily accessible to the public on the north, near Southeast 36th, to the most back of house, where the existing hilly site and trees screen noisy activities from view. Now, we've talked a lot already about the activities in Zones 1, 2 and 3 on the eastern side of this diagram at the bottom. Zones 4 and 5 constitute the lower and upper yards. The lower yard contains fueling stations, this is diesel, propane, water and normal gasoline. The watering station, de-icing station, raw material storage and capital projects, material and equipment laydown. The upper yard contains the Public Works decant facility, street sweep debris, all the organic debris, waste and recycling. And this diagram illustrates in a little more detail the organization of the upper and lower yards. The fueling stations are organized right on that one-way loop around the site, making it easy and convenient for city vehicles to refuel, but it also makes it very convenient for the delivery of fuel and water into one of the main areas of the site without having to move through the other portions of the site. Materials like organics and waste and recyclables are kept up at the upper yard along that two-way drive and accessed by a fair number of third-party contractors. This view illustrates the raw material storage in the lower yard. Those bays are composed of ego blocks with a simple steel structure covering those materials from the weather. Raw materials include soil, sand, gravel and rock. They're used in infrastructure projects, street repair and park maintenance throughout the city. And this is a view of the upper decant facility located in the upper yard, my apologies, not the lower yard. The fifth strategy derives from the fourth, and that is, let's organize these buildings into zones that maximize shared spaces and promote efficient operations and create clearly accessible spaces for public services. There are four critical departments that will occupy the proposed building. These departments are really the foundation for basic city operations and public safety: the Mercer Island Police Department, the Emergency Operations Center, Public Works, IT and GIS departments, and the customer service counter. These four departments have requirements that overlap and offer opportunities for shared facilities to maximize functionality and minimize the square footage is required to reduce costs. Through project planning, these common spaces are referred to as shared workspaces. This diagram illustrates the programmatic organization of the PSM building, highlighting the programs located on the first floor. And on the first floor, we have the customer service counter, the police department and the emergency operations center. The ground floor of the building is about 23,000 gross square feet. And as we mentioned, it houses the police department, customer service counter, the customer service staff, the emergency operations center, and of course, all the entries around the building. There's one public entry on the north face of the building, staff entry is located on either side, and Mercer Island Police Department entries all located within the secure perimeter. The public access spaces encompass about 3,300 square feet on the ground floor of the building and include the customer service counter and the emergency operations center, which may be used for community events. This view illustrates that public entry to the public safety and maintenance building as seen from the parking lot. And you can see the vestibule in this case is highlighted in blue, and that ground-level glazed portion is that customer service counter. On the right-hand side of that lobby essentially is the police department lobby. And you can see various other elements, like the communications, the emergency communications array atop the building and landscaping within the public parking lot. Within that public lobby, which houses the customer service counter, it also houses the police department records desk and reception window. This is located with visibility to public parking and incoming residents, also with visibility to the customer service counter and direct access into police department interview rooms. The Mercer Island Police Department utilizes about 20,000 square feet of that ground floor. Now, that includes the shared spaces on entries on either side, the main lobby, and the emergency operations center, which dovetails as training areas, holds two conference rooms that are available for use by the police department. As we toured regional police departments, one of the things we were struck by were some of the interior workspaces, such as the officer's report writing room depicted in this photograph. These are often located on the interior of the building with no access to natural light. In tours of other facilities, what we found were that facilities that did have windows would generally require, or didn't have, very expensive bulletproof glazing just for operational security. And in each department toured, where there were windows, the shades were consistently drawn for officer's security, but also privacy from public view and working on sensitive This photograph illustrates the report writing room and the main officer area in the Mercer Island Police Department's temporary portable trailers. And this area, like many others in other departments, is a kind of catch-all for everything from workspaces to officers to storage for hand trucks. The proposed public safety and maintenance building would have a patrol report writing room, briefing room, patrol briefing room, lunch and break room, alongside an interior courtyard that would allow natural light and air and a moment to step outside without breaking that secure perimeter. So not moving forward with expensive bulletproof glazing, but instead dropping a small courtyard into the footprint of the building. On the northeast corner of the building is located the emergency operations center, and this comprises about 6,800 square feet, including lobby and access areas and restrooms. This is sized to accommodate 44 people, has a small meeting room and a large meeting room, adequate storage to really put everything away so that this space can be multifunctional, locating the ham radio room, break area and work area, and a receiving zone directly off of the southern side of the emergency operations center. This view illustrates that emergency operations center, the large meeting room you can see off to the left, the small meeting room doubling as the joint information center off to the right, and the main workspace configurable in quite a number of different configurations as might best suit the emergency on hand in the direction of your emergency manager. The EOC is also a flexible space that can be shared among city departments for public works staff meetings, police department training, and when not used by the city, the space could be available for community use. The customer service counter and city staff areas comprise about 7,000 square feet on the ground floor of the building. And they include the purple areas, which are the customer service counter desks, work rooms and copy areas, as well as the emergency operations areas. The small meeting room may be used for permit meetings, along with one of the shared interview rooms, break areas and staff restrooms to the southern side of the blue area, and dedicated staff entry to the side of the building so the staff, you know, aren't required to move through the public entry of the building. This is just a zoomed-in view of that public vestibule lobby and the customer service Now, the ground floor includes about 6,600 gross square feet of space that is shared across all city departments. And these include entries, vertical circulation, break areas, restrooms, the public lobby, and a suite of meeting rooms that comprise the emergency operations area. This diagram illustrates the programmatic organization of the second floor of the PSM building, which primarily hosts the Public Works Department and the IT and GIS department, along with shared spaces that are common to all departments. The second floor is about 16,000 gross square feet and includes shared workplace facilities on the western side and Public Works IT and GIS offices and workstations on the eastern Now, the existing Public Works building is a pretty tough office environment. This photograph depicts some of the ad hoc office spaces in those maintenance and shop bays that were alluded to earlier. And this illustrates the need for adequate workspace for staff. The electrical systems are not designed for this current load. We find that desks are located in front of doorways. They're narrow and shallow workspaces and inadequate circulation between workspaces for folks who are operating with vests, tool belts and other equipment that they're bringing in and out. The existing building also does not have adequate or code-required facilities. This photograph depicts the portable toilets that have been located near the Public Works facility to serve the increased occupant load. The original building was simply not designed to house the current number of staff. The existing building also lacks the type of spaces needed for current operations. 1980 is not 2025. And this photograph of the existing Public Works building depicts rooms that were originally constructed as restrooms or cleanup rooms that are forced to do double duty and incorporate incompatible uses like server and communications infrastructure. And I'm just going to ignore that electric cord going over the back of the sink. The second floor of the public safety and maintenance building includes about 6,400 gross square feet that is shared across all city departments. This includes a fitness area, meeting rooms, lunch and break area, sleep rooms, lockers, changing, cleanup and restrooms. The other portion of the floor includes meetings and offices, open workstations and offices, IT and GIS servers, storage rooms and work areas for Public Works IT and GIS, and they utilize about 10,000 gross square feet, yeah, for dedicated meeting office and workstations, while utilizing the additional 6,400 square feet on a daily basis. This is an interior view of the Public Works office areas in the public safety and maintenance building. This illustrates the southern side of the building, that hallway from the open office area through to the lockers and lunchroom areas, meeting spaces along one side with open office and crew workspaces out in the center. Now, the operations building is the other component to the two primary structures on the site. This is a two-story structure designed to house a wide range of operational functions for the Public Works Department. The ground floor of the building houses a warehouse for material, equipment, tool storage, a workshop, warehouse and shop staff offices, cleanup restrooms, emergency rent stations. It houses the emergency operation storage and building system spaces common not just to this building, but to the PSM building as well. The second floor of the building is a high-bay structure to accommodate overhead gantries and the maintenance of vehicles on lifts. It houses vehicle and equipment maintenance bays, the maintenance shop, the same cleanup restrooms, emergency rent stations, maintenance and yard offices, and indoor storage for oversized and expensive vehicles and equipment. The existing Public Works warehouse is, has a challenging condition posed by the early 1980s facility. Relatively low ceiling clearance is 12 feet to the bottom of the structure, but primarily an eccentrically shaped room really did not contribute to the efficient storage or access of material, particularly material on pallets. The existing emergency operations center storage, emergency operations supplies are currently stored just outside this building in an uninsulated shipping container located near the MICEC. And in the public works yard, we can see on a daily basis the lack of protection for some of the city's most expensive vehicles and equipment. And this photograph illustrates one of the sewer vac truck that really, in this case, must be stored fully exposed to the elements and unnecessary wear. Pause if Jason wants to go through this, or I can mention this slide.
Go ahead.
So, keeping expensive city-owned equipment in good condition is part and parcel to really enclosing and providing a semi-heated and covered environment for those vehicles. Heated storage prevents freezing during, freezing damage. So in vac trucks, water is used in their operation. And freezing temperature can cause waters in the tanks, pipes, valves and hoses and other components to freeze and expand. Even a simple expansion can lead to cracks, leaks and ruptures and severe damage resulting in costly repairs and downtime. Maintaining efficiency, cold weather affects the viscosity of fluids. We all know this from our own vehicles, like engine oil and hydraulic oil. And when these become too thick, it puts extra strain on the truck's engine hydraulic system, reducing their efficiency and reducing the lifespan of vehicle parts and components. So bringing those in out of the weather is really about proper protection to prevent long-term damage that could significantly shorten very expensive equipment lifespan. Now, the ground floor of the operations building is about 10,000 square feet with additional 3,500 square feet of covered exterior storage that also serves as potential expansion space in the future. This floor houses the warehouse, workshop space, EOC storage, warehouse manager's office and staff, restrooms and cleanup areas. Each of these spaces has direct access to the covered loading and unloading zones directly to the north. Primary facility systems, the building systems are located in the back end of this lower level, sort of embedded in the hillside. And this view again illustrates that warehouse on the ground level, looking out towards the loading area and the covered crew parking beyond. The second floor of the building, not the ground floor, equals about 19,000 square feet. This floor houses high-bay vehicle and equipment storage, maintenance bays, maintenance shop and operations office and staff restrooms. It lines up eight parking spaces for oversized vehicles. These are 12 feet by 40 feet in dimension. Three maintenance bays with service aisles between each bay, a shop on the eastern side, staff entries, office, and to the southern side, equipment storage and loading directly fronting the loading zone and vehicle and trailer access points south of this building. This is an interior view of the operations building, vehicle and maintenance bay and storage area. This illustrates a 20-foot-high minimum clearance to allow for the six-and-a-half to seven-foot lift of a 13-foot, six-inch-high vac truck to still clear certain utilities, sorry, certain building systems that would be located under structure overhead, with wall service and materials for equipment storage rack mounting, protecting those vehicles and protecting the equipment storage.
So, Mr. Mayor, we have probably about a dozen slides left that are really focusing specifically on the cost estimate. I think we might stop here and answer questions about the schematic design. Before we do that, I just wanted to make two more comments. One, on the renderings, you're seeing finishes. Those are not final finishes, those are just images to really depict scale and layout. Finishes come much later. The other thing I will note about the schematic design, particularly on the first floor in the police department, we have moved the interior walls around five or six times now. And I would say we still probably don't have everything in the right location. We have some more fussing to do. That will come in the 60% to 90% phases. But what you can assume at this point is that the building footprint is set. Right? We're not going to change the building size, but we will continue to work on refining the interior. So that's, as you think about the next phases of design, this will continue to evolve. But the building scale is about set, the location is set, the size of the yard is set, and I will stop talking. We welcome your questions.
Okay. No, there was a lot of information. Counsel, I'm open up to discussion and question. Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
Yeah, I have a few questions. Jason, can you get into a little bit now for the vehicles that need to be kept in climate-controlled storage? What is our current solution for those?
That's a great question. There we go, now we're on. Okay. That's a great question. So currently, our existing facility has four, call it, large vehicle bays. That is currently what the mechanic shop utilizes for servicing all of the fleet's equipment. So we have one mechanic, four bays. During the... During the winter months, three of those bays are occupied each night. And that, as you saw earlier, the numbers don't add up. There are still vehicles that are left out in the elements. The reason we bring those vehicles in at night, we are 24/7 operation. So, an example I would use is a resident calls in on a water main break, which happens usually during the freeze thaw cycles throughout the course of the year, as we're all aware. Our crew responds, they jump in the hydroexcavator. What is a hydroexcavator? A hydroexcavator is a combination of a pressure washer and vacuum on wheels. That's very, very expensive. But it is a much more precise piece of equipment that allows us to go out into the field, often in some very tough locations, steep slopes. It has a water tank on it that allows them to excavate precisely near a water main break and then service the water main break, perform the repair with hopefully minimizing damage to the surrounding area and the streets. Under the current operation, those, three of those four bays are occupied with a hydroexcavator, a jetter truck, a street sweeper, perhaps a de-icer. And so, what that requires is the mechanic, who's in there performing routine maintenance for only the Public Works vehicles, police vehicles, other city equipment. He is very, very limited in terms of what he can and can't do on a regular basis. So, an example for mechanics, typical day would be, so he has three vehicles that come into the shop, he's going to perform an oil change on one vehicle, perhaps police has some front-end work that needs to be done, or brake job, and then perhaps a third vehicle has some cosmetic work. During the course of those winter months in particular, he can't utilize the mechanic shop because the hour or two in the morning, the hour and a half in the afternoon, those vehicles are coming and going in and out of the shop. And so, it really limits his ability to be efficient in his operations and keep the rest of the fleet operational as well. So, long-winded answer to get to the point of three of the four bays are fully occupied by housing vehicles overnight. And again, that doesn't even cover all of the vehicles on a routine basis.
Great. I would share the questions soon.
Okay. Councilmember Andrell.
Yeah. I'm kind of, my questions go to the cost, but of course, the design drives the cost. So, I don't know if they're design questions or cost questions, but I'm really kind of struggling with the cost and also, you know, look at what the scale of the project is and, you know, in particular, the second story areas and the full roof coverage. And if you could talk a little bit about whether there's surplus space in the second floors of both of those buildings and the extent to which pulling back on the full roof coverage would impact the cost of the project?
Erin, maybe what I might suggest too is to talk about, when we started the design process, we had two buildings with two distinct roof structures. And as the design evolved, we mushed them together. Technical term. Don't let the city manager talk about architecture. Can you just remind us why we did that? The pros and cons of one roof structure? And then, we can speak to Councilmember Andrell's question as well.
Yeah, so, prior to April 15th, we'll talk about that a bit more in a moment, when the council authorized us to really pull those buildings together. We were working with three separate structures across the site, each one, two of them with a building, and separate adjacent weathering covers, and then a third weathering cover over the vast majority of fleet vehicles and equipment. And of course, we were finding that the operations between all of those things are really tethered, they're interwoven, so they didn't really work well to be separated. We were also finding that we were having to do a lot more hillside excavation, a lot more retaining structures, a lot more potential new concrete podium work than we really wanted to do to just accommodate the size, the footprint size needed by Public Works vehicles. And moving all of those to one location allowed us to do a couple of things. As we mentioned in the presentation, freed up the yards to really take on their own life and accommodate what they need to accommodate for Public Works. But it let us consolidate the footprints of some of these buildings. The Public Works Operations Building, instead of being one story, now became two, right? So, it occupies less space on the site, more space on the site is available for these very large vehicles maneuvering. It also helped us consolidate that weathering cover, to the point of your question, which allowed operations to flow a little more smoothly, but it also eliminated some of the redundancy in sheer structure across the site for lateral stability. It allowed us to tie that structure into the buildings to utilize their sheer capacity and developing its own sheer capacity, so realizing some synergies between those functions. Now, each one of the buildings has, that, the larger roof is composed of kind of three conditions, right? There's the roof over the buildings, which is part of that. There is some portion of covering that really does need to take place on the south side of the PSM building for Police Department, on the north side of the warehouse for loading and unloading, pulling up trucks to, in this case, pull up the trucks instead of take the equipment to them, and load and unload for crews on a daily basis. And on the south side of the Operations Building as well to do the same thing. The balance then, the areas that are covering vehicle and equipment parking and drive aisles for those vehicles, if that gives an overview.
My question is, is there excess capacity in the buildings?
Right. So, in the plan that we looked at for the Public Works Operations Building, that second story, I think we have a current roster of six oversized vehicles that need to find a home. There are eight spaces provided. And we're including three maintenance bays. The bay description is a bit funny. We're looking at three 40-foot-long maintenance bays with service space in between those. On the opposite side of that, we have a storage zone for equipment that really should be indoors as well. And these are like some of the propane mowers. I forget, Jason probably list off a few of those other things as well. So, to answer your question, we've slimmed that footprint down as much as we're comfortable proposing to you.
But what I just heard you address was space on the main floor of both of the buildings. And my question pertained to the second floor of both of the buildings.
Oh, sorry, I was talking about the second floor of the Operations Building.
And you also want to know about the front building, the PSM building?
The PSM building.
Sure. The second floor of the PSM building houses IT and GIS and all of the Public Works operations and maintenance staff. All staff will have some sort of touchdown space, but that doesn't mean dedicated offices. I would argue that we've built in a little bit of flexibility, maybe for two or three additional touchdown spaces, but otherwise, it's fairly tightly constrained. Similar to the Police Department, I think we planned for two extra workstations and one extra office. Everything else is built to kind of current volumes. One of the challenges we have, it's not, it's a little different for police, but for Public Works, we have a summer, spring and summer surge where we bring on, how many seasonals, 20?
Fifteen to 20.
Fifteen to 20 seasonals. So, we also have to address their needs. They don't need necessarily a dedicated touchdown space, but they're using the kitchen, the locker rooms, and the other facilities. So, there's, there's got to be a little flexibility for that seasonality of the work that Public Works performs in all of the buildings.
If I could add to, so, we've taken a lot of steps to modernize our operations. We use technology out in the field all the time, all day, every day. But oftentimes, it's with small little devices like this. And someone who has fat fingers or fat thumbs like myself, you tend to make some quality errors when you're entering in the field. So, they need the space to come back to in the office where they have a larger desk or a desktop space or PC, some sort of computer screen where they can actually quality control when they're finalizing their asset management inventory and tracking as well.
Yes, I am suffering from a lack of a laptop right now. I get it.
Several of you are. We do have an IT person here that can help you.
You know, and I just want to say, and I may have some more questions when we get to the cost component, don't misconstrue my questions as negative or, you know, even requesting design changes because I certainly don't have the credentials for that. But, you know, I do want to be mindful that we're going to be asking the public for a lot of money. And I want to be sure that we are not, you know, selling something gold-plated when it doesn't need to be gold-plated. Like stainless steel would be good. So, I just feel like it's our obligation to drill down on this and kind of say, you know, is there a lot of nice to have and not a lot of need to have? I'm not hearing that, but I feel like it's fair to the public to ask those questions.
The questions are great. One of the things that I want to go back to is our February discussion. I think it was at that meeting that I was using the term shell space. And we asked, do you want to build shell space on this building, which is a term for just extra room so the city could grow into it? And the answer was no. And I think that was the right answer. We're seeing a cost estimate that is, it's very high, cost of construction is high. So, that was the right decision. At some point in the future, hopefully that's 30 or 40 years out, should that, that council and administration need to modify this building, particularly the front one, they would expand to the north. And that, the building was designed so that, you know, the parking lot sits there, and if an expansion is needed, that's the direction that we would go. So, that has been our thinking with the design, is we aren't building shell space, but we're making sure our design would allow for a future city to add on, should it be necessary.
Councilmember Weicher.
I'll just say, the diagram on page 13 of our package shows the taking advantage of the grade too, so I thought that was a really cool diagram. And I just want to say, professionally, for 20 years, I've been involved with capital projects, and they take a lot of time and a lot of planning, and they cost a ton of money. And once you get into them, they're all manner of surprises. So, this might sound expensive, Lisa, but it's going to be worse in a few years. And I think we pared down a bunch with laminated and sort of steel. So, I get we're trying to keep it to, you know, a reasonable number. And I think for this kind of a project, for this kind of a scale, over the decades that we're making up for and the decades that we're planning for, this is absolutely critical. And we've been working on this for months, if not years. So, I just want to start there. So, thank you for all the work. And my question has more to do with the people who are going to be in this building and the work that's getting done and the essential services that are happening there. I'm looking at my police back here, and I'm looking at my beloved, long-term Public Works director over here. And like, he said 24/7, and he used interesting words like eccentric and challenging and inefficient in a very monotone voice. So, I got to hand it to you because I think our staff have been working under incredible conditions for many years, and certainly the last two have been excruciating. So, I know you spend a lot of time with staff. Could you just remind everyone again, since I know this meeting is probably going to be watched 100 times in the next few months? Tell me about the people and the engagement and the work. You spent a ton of time working with our people to make sure we got this right. And I know we have a little tweaking, but these people who are keeping this community safe and keeping this community going in the winter during a water emergency, maybe a resource for the region if we, if we haven't helped, have an earthquake, like, this is a building for our community to keep us safe and keep us operational and supporting all the critical work that we do day in and day out. So, talk about the people a little bit for me.
And maybe what I might do, I'm going to call on Acting Chief Michelle Bennett. One of the questions, Councilmember Weicher and I had a sidebar prior to the meeting. You know, police are out in the field, Michelle, and yet, this building plays a, especially the interior space of that first four, plays an essential role for us. Can you just give us the thumbnail, a day in the life of an officer, how they're using the building, what's happening, like, within in custody, for example? And because we're not just in the field, we're also in the building. There's also a customer-facing side of this that we've intentionally built in. So, I'll ask you to talk about somebody walking into the building that needs police services and what we've done there. There we go.
No? Yes? No?
It should be on now?
Technology.
Yeah, Erin will hand it.
Okay, great, great questions. And there are sort of two, actually, three main functions for the Police Department. So, I'll kind of start, I like that, a day in the life, that's great. So, a couple of the things that we want to clarify, as City Manager Bond stated, the design right now, basically, other than a couple of extra officer spaces and one potential office later for an admin person, which we, at some point, desperately need, it's kind of the size right now. So, it's kind of, it'd be great to have, to build to an exercise, but that's not where we're at. We're barely maintaining with our current staff and our current needs. So, with, with a day in the life, there are such things as, and as Sound Transit comes in, I think we'll see a lot more of this, people coming off that platform. So, we have to house prisoners. Should we arrest somebody withholding cells? We have to have an area to process them, fingerprint them, a place to do interrogations. Obviously, our holding cells, a place to process evidence. We have to have a storage facility for evidence, and that, right now, takes up a pretty large area. Again, we have to have places to separate interviews or suspects. Should we have to have, you know, two separate spaces so they can't be interconnected? We have to have spaces for interviews with witnesses. Sometimes, if this can't be at the court with prosecutors or defense attorneys for their interviews. We have to have a space for specific types of evidence, like guns, gun lockers, drugs, refrigerated evidence for things like sexual assault kits or any other type of sensitive evidence. We need a place to obviously store drug evidence, should that come in. We also have to have a place for officers to be. So, yes, they are out in the field, but especially when we get body cameras, they have to come back and download all of their data, write their reports, submit their evidence, check in with their sergeant. It's also where we have our roll calls. It's where they change, they come in and change. Sometimes, officers work more than their 12-hour shift. So, if you can imagine a day in the life when you have a 12-hour shift and you have court in the morning? So, you get off at 6:00 a.m. You live in Tacoma because no one can afford to live in King County. And, just kidding, not really. But, so, they, they have to sleep, right? Because they have court at 8:00 a.m. They're not going to drive to Tacoma and turn around and come back. So, we have to have an area for somebody, you know, in a 12-hour shift to sleep for just at least a couple hours. Then, we need shower facility, and that, someone already talked about, the sleep room and facilities, a lunchroom. 12-hour shifts are a long time for your breakfast, lunch, and dinner. Then, let's get into the training mode. So, we have mandatory training the state makes us take, crisis intervention training. We have 24 hours of mandatory training. We have defensive tactics training. We have legal update training. We just have a host of trainings. So, we have to have a facility and a space to do those trainings to stay current. We also need space for all of our IT stuff, all of our equipment. We have a lot of equipment. If you've seen the Marine Unit Storage, that's a ton of equipment. We have personnel and training. We have to put all, where all of our files go, our bicycles, we have several of those. We have dive suits, we have tanks, we have, there's so much stuff. I could probably spend an hour talking about all the spaces. We're going to need a public disclosure office when we get body cameras. That has to be secured, sort of tied off space to view videos. We have evidence staff. We have our PNT Sergeant, a Marine Unit Sergeant, our emergency manager. We have commanders, the chief. So, these are just people that don't go out in the field. So, these are people that are bound to the office. So, the last thing I'll talk a little bit about are roll calls. We have roll calls that have training every night, and that's done in our office. And when we hire a new recruit, they often can't go to the academy right away. Sometimes, it will take a couple of months. So, we, that's a space at the PD where, and right now, we don't have a lot of, we're cramming people in, like, two or three to an office. Sometimes, not, Marine Unit, right now, is housing a little office with records, or, sorry, with EOC, emergency management. So, they're, they're in this, these, and then, all the EOC stuff is all over the place within the office as well. I think the mayor came and did a little tour and got to see five people crammed into a little office the other day. So...
At least you keep your hand cards inside. Public Works doesn't even get that going for them.
Yeah, thanks. We have, we have some minor things. Okay, back onto the civilian side. So, for the civilian side, people bring evidence to us all the time. They'll come out and go, I found this box of ammunition up in my attic. Can you take this for me? I found this gun that my great-grandfather had. Will you take this for me? So, there's the, right now, we don't even have that forward-facing walk-in for community members. So, we find them wandering around our portable buildings because it's not secure currently. And we're coming into security, having worked at several different stations over the last 35 years or so. The last station I worked at, we had over 55 patrol cars damaged in the space of 10 years because there was no fencing. So, they were putting, you know, nails and tires, and one place had a device placed in the muffler and all kinds of stuff like that. So, there's those considerations as well when we're talking about covered, right, and secured. When we bring prisoners in, covered and secured, so the person can come in ambush dangers. I could sit here for an hour and talk about the security needs. But for community members specifically, we can't operate our drug drop box right now because we don't have a forward-facing facility for people to come in and drop off prescription drugs. That has to be contained. We can't, well, it's difficult right now to do fingerprinting. We're in a little job shack trailer. If we have to do some fingerprinting, that's a public-facing service where we'll do fingerprinting for job checks and background checks and things like that. Certainly, a possibility in the future to do it for concealed weapons permits. Right now, we, we contract that out to Bellevue, a Bellevue company. Other things we do related to citizens... Um, other things we do related to citizens, um, right, emergency management, that's a huge one. So uh, as you know, when there's an emergency and on average about four times a year, we activate that. It sounds like here in the city, maybe more lately. So we have to have a space to conduct training, to have our CERT volunteers, to have uh, emergency shelter. Right now, the community center is the only place to do that, to store all of our supplies, to have our emergency management meetings. It's our backup nine-one-one center. And when the apocalypse hits, it's the only radio room uh, for amateur radios for all communication systems. So uh, emergency management is another, another huge one. Someday it'd be nice to have, you know, volunteers or explorers, they'd have to have a place to meet and that would have to be within the facility. Um, what am I missing? So there's, there's a whole, a host of reasons why space is necessary. And again, this building has built just enough, honestly, space. It's, it's not overhoused. Uh, and the last piece I'll mention is that currently we're not, we can't be accredited because of our space. We don't have the space to do it. So it's really important, I think, to be accredited again in the future, should we be able to do that? Thanks.
Okay. Councilmember Weber.
Yeah, so first of all, I, I'd uh, like to say that I really like the design of the circular oculi or the, the, the skylights uh, on, on top of the, the building. And in the front of the building, I'm not sure if it was in one of the slides, but there's this large Mercer Island logo uh, on the front of the building. And it kind of picks up on that design of having, you know, a, a circle within a large rectangular space uh, that's repeated throughout the site. Um, and I, I like how it kind of breaks up the massing of the building to have a, a moment where suddenly you have light coming down uh, from above. Um, I, I had some uh, questions about how that works. Um, so are all of the oculi um, covered with glass or are the ones that are over the parking areas actually just open to the rain coming through?
No, those are, thank you for the question. Um, those are all covered with glass. Uh, those are all skylights. Uh, and it's actually for a, for a mass timber construction, it's actually a very simple technique because you're really not framing out around anything to make that happen. You're cutting a hole in the deck itself. And then you're applying the curb and skylight to the top. So all of those are prefabricated units with prefabricated detachment points.
Okay. I, I presume that the uh, is it glass or is it uh, heavy plastic or do you know what uh, substance would be used for that?
It'll be laminated glass.
Okay. And so I presume since it's exposed to the weather on a relatively flat but not entirely flat roof, that it will collect dust and leaves and such, so maintenance will be needed on top. How does one get to the roof? Uh, is there a, a place where we're planning on putting a ladder or a stairwell or someplace to securely get up there?
Yep, there are two points of access, one from the public safety and maintenance building, um, and one from the operations building, uh, equipment mezzanine. So those move directly up to the roof. The roof is a low slope roof, so it's not entirely flat.
Right.
But it's not so steep that walking on it would create a hazard. So it's a much lower slope than the roof on your house.
Right.
For, for example, uh, if you have a pitched roof on your house.
Okay. Do we plan on having railings all the way around the edges?
So railings are required within a certain perimeter of any devices or elements that have to be regularly maintained. Um, so we're pulling those skylights off enough so that all will be required to do is include a warning line.
Okay.
So outside of that, the roof will contain things called davits. And davits are tie-down areas to allow workers or service people with a harness, um, and a two-point connecting cable to tie off and access any portion on the roof safely.
Okay. Um, I, I do have some other questions, so I want to uh, make sure I leave uh, time for others, so if we can come back to me after I've just had a chance to ask.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Rosamont.
Yeah, um, Jason or someone can, question about the EOC. When we talk about, um, you know, I think to Lisa's question about sort of extra space, why is it important to have that facility in this facility? Uh, you know, obviously if somebody asked, why isn't there council chambers in the building? And I said, well, we're pretty comfortable at the community center. And obviously, while we don't have a lot of emergencies, knock on wood, the EOC has been set up here too. Why is it so important to move that into this, this facility?
Let me take the first part of the question and then Jason will uh, wrap it up. Uh, it's essential to have a, an EOC separate and distinct from other public areas. Many of you were here during the recent Bob Cyclone event where we were wa, working out of this room. Uh, we were very constrained. Uh, we were using volunteers, so we were literally on top of each other while the rest of this facility was surveying the community. Uh, this, this facility is designed to be public-facing in an emergency and, and we need our operations to be separate. It was, although we made it work, it was highly disruptive. Uh, we unfortunately have been activating our EOC about four times a year. During the pandemic, we were long-term activated. Uh, so, and, and if you've seen the operation, all of us wear two hats, right? I'm the city manager, but I'm also an emergency management employee when that, the need comes. So why combine with all the other teams? I will ask Jason to handle that one.
Uh, so as I referred earlier, we're a twenty-four seven operation. So usually these emergencies, they, you know, it'd be nice if they happened during standard business hours, but that's not the only when they happen. Uh, and so it makes sense in this facility because you have police, public works, IT, IGS and customer service all in one building. And those are the four teams that run your operations for an incident command. I mean, there's a ton of other people involved, but primarily those four groups have a heavy, heavy hand in our incident response. And so having them housed together at that facility allows the public works staff to work with the police commanders, you know, and the patrol officers and we're getting, you know, real live data to, from out in the field uh, to the incident command center to prioritize and manage the incident. And so uh, the EOC is, we have found because we do have a handful of events throughout the course of the year, but even the snow events, simple windstorms, they tend to sometimes be larger than we anticipate. So it's just easier to roll the EOC, uh, the operation up and, you know, it's easy to stand back down if necessary, but we have found that it's far more efficient to, to open it up and work together closely. It provides a better response for the community.
Some other times we may activate our EOC, um, I-90 closures. It just helps for all of us to be in one command center. World Cup coming up, we may be activated, again, having us all in one command center. I think the other thing to point out is I'll remind you, this building, these buildings, these structures are proposed to be level four facilities, which means in the event of a significant earthquake, they're built to withstand the earthquake. We absolutely need an EOC in a level four facility and, and this will be the city's level four facility once it's constructed.
Let me ask you, you showed a picture of a maintenance facility that had individual bay doors, but your design decision is to have, you know, pull-through. Can you talk about why you didn't propose a, you know, like an eight bay door, you know, straight drive-in uh, facility that didn't have that?
Yeah, there were, thank you, there were, there were two reasons, um, actually a couple. So one was um, the operation of the bay doors, um, maintenance over time, bay doors going down, limiting that potential. The second is that the, that floor plate accommodates more than just the vehicles pulling in and out. Um, it accommodates uh, equipment that needs to be loaded onto the vehicles, equipment stored to load onto trailers. And one of the things that we saw and learned from talking with folks on our tour in Bremerton um, was that though they use the, they use that, that pull-in bay door with the space between bays to store all of that equipment. Um, and it's very difficult to get to that equipment and get it out when there's a vehicle parked in that bay. So developing a plan that does double duty allows us to move vehicles in and out independent of the crew accessed, all the equipment and vehicles need to be loaded onto the trailers was one of the driving parameters of that floor plate.
Okay, can you do a better job explaining this equipment that is loaded and, no, I think the public and myself certainly needs to understand. You know, if you could pull a vehicle in loaded, why wouldn't you pull it out loaded? You know, what is all this loading and loading going on?
So I can, I can start, maybe I'll ask Elaine to jump in too, if she wants to add to it, but uh, I, I'll just say, we have experience at the fire station, east side fire and rescues here, those doors are prone to failure at times. They are used heavily and they, there's a lot of wear and tear on them. A public works facility in particular, there's a ton of activity throughout the course of the day. And so those doors would be constantly opening and closing, uh, just given the number of teams and people that are in and out of the facility. Uh, and actually when we were in Bremerton, what we saw was, uh, in that site tour, they actually left their doors open during the day. And so they actually had a couple of different heating systems in place for their, for that shop space because the doors were open at all times. So with that, in terms of ongoing operations or day-to-day, I'll, I'll use the water main break as an example. City Manager Bond referenced our AC main replacements earlier. That's a, a replacement program on the water utility where we tend to see catastrophic failures when we have a water main break. And when I say catastrophic, that's, that means we're replacing full segments of pipe. So an example of the loading and unloading would be as the crew's out there, one crew's doing a dig with a hydro excavator, another crew's uh, running back to the shop and we're, we're, we're taking full sticks of pipe. You know, we're not talking two foot sections pipe, we're talking twenty, thirty, forty, sixty feet of pipe. And some, sometimes uh, we're loading on a trailer, uh, that pipe is not something that you want to be exposed to the elements. It's made to be underground, uh, away from that sun degradation. And so having a closed facility where um, a crew member can, you know, one crew member swing back to get the number of six of pipe necessary to perform the repair, they can look, run into the facility, protected. That pipe has, got its manufacturer warranty associated to it because it hasn't been exposed to those elements. They can load the, the trailer up, out to the job site, the crew can function uh, rather efficiently in that place versus uh, the way it's currently operating. Uh, our pipe is oftentimes sitting outside in the yard. As you saw, uh, a couple of pictures of the plows, those plows are actually up against some of those piles of pipe where we have to move the plows out of the way to get to a specific type of pipe. And again, our infrastructure was, was installed at different times, but predominantly in the fifties and sixties. And so there's different types of material types out there. So sometimes um, the AC pipe is a certain size that's maybe unique and so we have to go digging for it in the pile. So having, having the system set up in the, in the building, um, where it's sized accordingly, uh, very organized and timely, the crew can roll in, load the trailer up and roll out uh, very, very quickly and efficiently.
And so there was some reference to a gantry. A gantry is a crane inside this building that can go from one end to the other. Is this is to facilitate this large pipe loading, unloading?
Yes, as well as some, and that's just an example I use, but a number of other materials as well.
Okay, and so just to close the, the loop on the doors, if we have a building with just two doors, those doors are going to operate a lot more than eight doors, you know, do we not have a greater concern of failure?
Um, they, they would still have a more of, uh, these two doors would still create a higher degree of failure versus being open, um, versus the eight, it's less, but there's still, there's still a potential there. It's something that is, would be considered general wear and tear that we would just have to bake into our ongoing operational maintenance costs for the facility. Um, Elaine nudged me back there to another example that we could use is on the park side of the house, uh, soccer goals. They're out predominantly from March until August, but those obviously need a, a place to be stored. And these aren't your small little modular soccer goals, these are the big soccer goals, they play on professional-sized fields. Um, that's the standard-sized soccer goal. Those, those are something that gets housed, uh, ideally in, inside undercover during the course of the non-use months. Again, they would roll in and out on a trailer, load them up, um, with the equipment and take them out to the facility.
Okay. Councilmember Weber.
Yeah, so I, I wanted to zoom in on the locker rooms for a minute. Um, so there's a locker room on the first floor, uh, in the police department, that I, I believe in the uh, floor plan has one door. Uh, and there's a locker room on the second floor, uh, that is in the shared space, uh, shared workspace and it has like four doors. Um, and am I assuming correctly that the, uh, the locker room for the police department is a secure locker room and the one on the second floor is not secure?
That is, that's correct. Sorry, the one on the first floor is specific to police department duty lockers. The one on the second floor, um, is a combination of equipment lockers, vests, boots, other things for the public works staff, um, along with a subset of lockers for personal effects.
I think we should clarify too, in, inside the police envelope, to access the police area requires you to be background checked or escorted. When we started this project, we, we tried to combine the locker room areas together for public works and police to share. It just does not work, uh, for security reasons and so we, we split them.
Okay. Uh, and is it then my understanding that both of the locker rooms will have both male and female employees, uh, using the locker rooms at the same time?
Yeah, we could talk about the design.
Yeah, that, that's correct, but the locker rooms themselves are not, uh, to the traditional locker rooms that we, that I remember from high school. So contemporary locker rooms in most facilities today are trending towards um, locker facilities where you store your stuff and changing rooms or full shower and changing rooms or full restrooms that serve as changing rooms as individual rooms off to the sides of those so that you store your, change your clothes, other equipment, um, in the locker, you take that to the changing room and you change. So you're not changing out of the open in front of everybody else in most contemporary locker rooms, even in a lot of fitness centers. And that does a couple of things. It standardizes a lot of equipment. It also means that over time, as the composition of a police force or a public works department changes in his male-female ratio, you're not coming back every five years to tear down the walls that you've just built, to take out the equip, the locker equipment that you've just put in and reconfigure it all to meet that new ratio.
And one thing I noticed when I was looking at the design of the second floor locker room is, uh, it has two doors on the north side and two doors on the south side. And then the, uh, the rooms on the sides, the, the, uh, the restrooms and the showers had walls that lined up, uh, in, in east-west fashion such that you could separate it in the middle if you wanted to have like, you know, the northern half of it be for one gender and the southern half for another gender, or you'd have like three-quarters of it, or at least visually it appears that way. I realize that structurally it'd be much more challenging, uh, than that. But was there a point in the design, uh, discussion when you were considering having a space that could be subdivided in that way and then, as you say, it, it could be adjusted later if the ratio changes significantly?
You know, it's a, it's an interesting and little-known fact that separate facilities require more space than joint facilities. Um, and so to construct those separate facilities means that we're responding to code requirements for the distribution of fixtures by sex, very differently than we would if these are combined facilities. And so for that reason, at the outset, we did, we, we looked at the space requirements for separate facilities and quickly moved to, uh, combined facilities with independent shower and changing rooms.
So I think what I'm hearing you say is that in order to have separate locker rooms for the male and female employees, it would be a significant increase in cost and an increase in the amount of space taken?
That's correct.
That's correct. I will also say, um, just keep in mind on public works that you have a seasonal fluctuation of employees. And every year we have a different mix of seasonal employees, so you can imagine how challenging it is to design facilities based on gender when every six months your ratios are changing. It's just, it's just not practical. One of the things we saw during our tours was grossly undersized female locker rooms in almost every facility we visited. Uh, so this is a better, um, uh, design approach and it, it ensures longevity of, of the building.
I do have some more questions, so I wanted to.
Deputy Mayor Rosamont.
Yeah, uh, you know, Jason did a pretty job entering this in the, in the, I assume it was Jason or the answer in the matrix. The question I had was sort of about operational efficiencies and the cost savings that we can expect with having more, uh, coverage in terms of materials and also obviously, you know, all the, you know, less conflicts with driving and quicker pickups, put downs, that kind of thing. But is there a way to quantify that in any? You know, it sounds like, you know, there's, you know, you, you have a task you do a thousand times, you do it a second quicker every time, you're going to start saving, saving a good amount of time at some point. But is there any way that we should be thinking about that from a, you know, because obviously this is an expensive building, but I do think that there's sort of a, a long-run efficiency cost-saving here that we will also recognize pretty significantly.
Yeah, it's hard to quantify with a number, but I can, let me describe some of the efficiencies that I can see out of this facility. And I'm going to, I'll focus on the yard in particular. And we call it an operation and maintenance component, but there's a capital component to this as well, component to this as well. Um, as you know, we're quickly nearing our peak construction season. Pay attention, roadworks on its way. Oftentimes involves a lot of asphalt work. So, um, our street engineer in particular would do a lot of, um, repaving a roadway where they're grinding the existing asphalt down. Those, that spoils, those spoils are then often, they need a place to be housed because then they can go, they can be turned and converted back into subgrade or subbase on a future project. And so by laying out the yard in which the, the way that Aaron and team have done so far, it allows our capital team to store materials for not only new capital projects, but also re, reusing, reusing existing materials on capital projects as well. In terms of improving efficiency, I referenced, this is a very, very busy yard. Just with the number of public work staff, the different types of functions that the teams perform. Again, this building's housing, water, sewer, streets, storm, parks, maintenance, facilities, PDs in and out, our mechanic shop. But then you bring in the outside vendors. Again, we have material storage for five H crushed rock. What do you use five H crushed rock for? We use a lot of it to help backfill around our water mains. Sand, gravel, topsoil, compost, all of that material is bringing, coming in and out of the yard on a daily basis. And often right during the peak hours that our crew is out and about doing things as well. And so it can be very, very busy and complicated. The way the layout has designed for the yard allows for a much cleaner and smoother operation, minimizing our conflicts. I wish I could sit here and tell you with a straight face, we've never had a conflict between vehicles in our yard, but unfortunately we have because it's a very busy place to, to happen. So it will minimize those conflicts, minimize the liabilities in the long run, both with our operators as well as our third party vendors.
Is conflict a polite word of saying accident?
Yes, sir.
I have one more question, but I will. Michelle, I was, I did a tour of the existing facilities a couple of months ago, I think. And I was wandering around outside until an officer came out to say, excuse me, sir, why are you wandering around outside the police department?
And you got to see a holding cell?
Almost, fortunately, you know, my picture's enough of the building, I guess, at some point. And, you know, I think obviously it's a challenge to sort of invite the public in to come see, but I do think that, you know, some of the pictures that we used illustrated some of the challenges. You know, I saw Commander Magnum's office and my understanding is that when someone else needs to make a phone call in there, they have to politely ask their, their, their colleague to leave. And that wasn't unique to his office, but a lot of the offices are shared. I mean, there's, there's real space constraints. So it's two part question. One, are we aware of any other police facilities or police departments that are operating out of these sort of temporary quarters in Western Washington or even the state? And the second part of that is if you could talk a little bit about sort of the, how important these facilities are to the, to the force, to the team. The conversations I've had with some officers, they've been very clear that not having a permanent and a very functional and up to date facility is important to them as they make career decisions. You know, and obviously this ladders up to something that I think is really important to residents, which is public safety. If we are losing officers because our facilities are in great shape, that, that's a problem. So if you could just talk, I'm curious sort of what, obviously you, you've been to a lot of different police departments. If you've seen, you know, departments operating under, you know, out of trailers essentially or sort of these temporary spaces and what that, those sort of conditions can do long run to the force.
As far as I know currently, there are no other police departments that I know of that are operating out of trailers or mobile homes or job shacks. We have kind of all of the above.
Whatever you want to call it.
Yeah, well, we have an amalgamation of all of those. I, I've worked in a number of different facilities over the last few decades and I think space is really important. So when you think about a police officer, when they come into work and you, you know, right now it's really hard, hard to hire law enforcement. There's very few candidates that meet muster that even want to be law enforcement officers. And so you have cities all vying for those very few candidates. And so you bring somebody in for a tour of your facility and you're like, we used to be there.
It's gotten so much better.
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, it's an important, not only a recruiting tool, it's also an important retention tool. So, you know, knowing that your, your future is going to be out of mobile homes for X number of years is, that's difficult. But knowing there's hope of, yeah, but we will have a, a functional facility at some point. I think that's what our officers right now are kind of holding on to, that, you know, they'll have a place to change. Every time I need to make any kind of phone call to one of my kids, I have to walk outside and come back in or, you know. Any, any, any type of difficult conversation, you can't have it because the walls are so thin, you can hear everything. So you have to go out into a car, go to a different place to have that conversation. So it's, it's onerous and it's very difficult right now. So I think it's really important for morale and for retention and recruitment and just functionality. Accreditation, all of those things to have a space.
Yeah, I think, you know, for anyone who might be watching now, we're, we're down the road here. You know, I think between the answer that Jason gave about some of the cost savings, obviously there's, there's costs when we have officers that, that churn. Hiring is hard and expensive. You know, I think, I do think that there's a lot of sort of unrealized savings in this sort of project despite the hefty price tag. Jason's going to, you know, annoy me if I ask him to quantify some of these things again, but I do think that there's, you know, that there is opportunity here when we think about this from a, you know, the trade offs to the cost of building the facility versus the long term cost savings. If there, there are some real cost savings to be had.
Mr. Mayor, if I could take on here, it was a question you asked earlier and following up on your question, Deputy Mayor. I don't know that we've sufficiently answered tonight the question about what is going in the operations building in terms of the volume of equipment we have. Just on the park side of the house, you can think about, in fact, for those of you that were on the Kitsap tour with us, we have mowers, we have chainsaws, we have weed eaters. You know, think about all the things that our, our crews are, oh, it's right here. Ball field equipment, aerators, top dressers, mowers, weed eaters, blowers, saws, generators, paint sprayers, pavement marking, blows, sanders, de-icers. So, and that's just, that's just the sort of medium equipment. It, it goes up from there. All of that is intended to be centralized in the operations building for easy access. Our renderings aren't showing that. It's looking like a big empty building. I think if we can work on our art a little bit, maybe to more represent, be more representative of what's in that building. And I, I hope that was helpful.
I think it would be. And, you know, I would welcome some sort of walkthrough and you could just point at things and say, you know, that would go there or there. I, I want it to be as easy as possible. You guys got a lot of work going on this time of year. I wanted to ask an engineering question just from the perspective of having the second floor of the maintenance building, having, you know, the heavy trucks and the gantries and is that more expensive from an engineering perspective than having those things on the bottom floor?
No, that, excuse me, that floor, that lower floor is a concrete structure. We're well within the parameters for a normal concrete post engine slab, you know, at that point. So there's not any increased loading imposed by the, by the use that we're proposing.
So you're, you're using the grade to optimize the cost of construction and the height? Next question is, you talked about the roof structure adding shear to the buildings. And if, if a dump truck went into that back portion with its dump bed raised, could it strike that upper roof?
Salim.
We, we cannot drive dump trucks with their beds raised.
I see that on the internet all the time.
Don't believe the internet.
On the internet all the time you see trucks going under bridges that say sixteen foot, you know, and they're twenty. So we see all sorts of things, but just when you said shear, I, and I saw that that roof structure is held up by just vertical posts. I didn't see any cross, it could be the rendering. But if it were to be struck, could it be struck by one of our typical trucks with the bed up?
Yeah, so there are, there, there are two, two points here. Number one, I'm an architect and so I like really pretty pictures. And I think that we're constantly learning the need to improve those pictures with the kind of on the ground entourage of equipment and personnel, you know, that really cram those spaces, spaces full of stuff. That comes along with the depiction of things like the brace frames that go along with a structure like this. And in constructing that covering, we're, what I mentioned about shear is that in consolidating all of that, we've worked with our engineers to understand a way to use the buildings, which are organized for shear themselves anyway, to provide the shear for the, for the balance of that structure. So minimizing the need for brace frames throughout that structure, leaving much more of it open and accessible. So those renderings, while they will accommodate some brace frames in the future, will ideally be selective about that. And to your question about bumping into them, you'll note in the renderings that each one of those vertical posts carries with it a pretty substantial concrete base. And that base height, we've discussed anywhere from four to six feet to accommodate the range of bumpers and drivers that happen to be operating vehicles in and around the yard. When we talk about lifting the end of a backhoe or tilting up the end of a dump truck, I'm not quite sure that you can drive a dump truck with the bed raised. Does that mean that's what you said earlier? But we have seen all the time, and I think we saw in Bremerton, fifteen foot high covering dented from a backhoe that had moved into it with the backhoe lid raised. And to answer your question, yes, the structure can withstand that. Would it get damaged by having a backhoe driven into it? Probably.
Okay, Councilman Weber.
Yeah, so I wanted to ask about the, the courtyard within the, the secure police area, which I thought is a really cool innovation, getting some light and getting some, some plants, you know, outdoor plants into that space. And I want to make sure that we get enough sunlight in there so it succeeds. It seems like a very narrow space. And so I was wondering, had you guys considered putting additional oculi or perhaps to make it cost neutral, move one of the oculi from the area over the parking to the area over like the detective space or over the lunchroom space so that the afternoon light and the morning light can actually diagonally get down into the, that space and keep the plants alive in there?
You know, council member, that's a great, that's a great observation and we'll make a note of, of your, your, your suggestion because in later stages of design, we routinely take sun angle analyses, kind of three hundred and sixty-five days at cardinal points during the day so that we can understand how moments within the building are really performing in the way that we intend them to perform. But that's a good observation about using some of those devices to calibrate that space to, to perform.
I think I also noticed that the, the wall immediately south of that, of that space is solid and is two stories tall. And there's glass to the east and the west of it. And I realized that you need to have a certain amount of sheer wall. You can't just have, you know, glass all the way, well, maybe you can be, but needs reinforcing for it. But I was wondering if it's possible to have glass above it so that light can actually get to it from the south as well? If there is, you know, if it was like a, I don't know, greenhouse type of, of structure above it. But it's trying to make sure that that space is successful because I think it really can be a nice centerpiece for, for life within the building, in that part of the building. One other question about that area was, i- is the roof over the northern half of the police department on that first floor completely flat? Or does it have a slope to it so it actually drains? Because it looks in the, in the photos or the, the renderings like it's flat, but presumably it has some slope to it, right?
Yeah, well, that, that, the structure of that portion of the roof is flat, but the insulation above it is tapered to allow it to slope, right?
Okay, yeah, I think I saw Craig's.
Councilman Wecker.
Can we get to cost soon? I want to get to Jason though, the importance of co-loading, co-locating staff. I get police and public works. Can you talk a little bit about IT and GIS? Because I know that's critical to your work, especially during an emergency. So having them there is an economy of scale that I think is important in this building design.
Yeah, it's, it's a great point. So I referenced the devices that we use out in the field. IT, IGS support our team daily with all functionality of our maintenance management system, our asset management system. During a storm event, they're helping create maps. We have trackers in our vehicles to help, you know, hit the snow and ice event. We're constantly tracking our snow and ice routes or where plows are at, if they're running into issues. Same with the, the wind events, they're helping with our street closures. And so, yeah, they're constantly side by side in those events, but also just day to day functionality. You know, we, we know where the majority of our assets are, but sometimes there's a, there's a surprise that we find out there when we're doing construction projects. And so IT and IGS help us with all that records, tracking the assets, updating the information. They are essential to our daily operations, they really are. I mean, they're, they're, they're connected to us at the hip.
One of the things we haven't talked a lot about here is that this building will be the future home of the city servers. And we don't talk a lot about where our servers are located due to security risks, but we are planning to put in new infrastructure in this building when it's constructed. Something else to remember about IT, and I think the renderings don't do a disservice, they have a lot of stuff. They actually have more stuff, I think, per employee than anyone sitting to my right or left. And the, the design is involved. We flipped IT and put it on the east side of the building so it could be closer to the loading dock and the elevators because they're constantly taking delivery of equipment. Sounds like we need some laptops, so that's an example. We store a lot of equipments, so that they, they take up a pretty big footprint on that second floor. An essential service, right? Again, teams that need to be in a level four facility because we need them to keep operating in the event of a disaster.
Okay, Councilman Reynolds, then we're moving on to costs.
I have one other question.
Councilman Reynolds.
Great job by the, the team here and great questions by the council. I've enjoyed listening to this. I'm going to take it in an entirely different direction. And if the city manager tells me this is the wrong forum or time or place for this, that's okay. Oh, we've been looking at this for months now. I think my, I, I know I personally am absolutely convinced of the necessity of this, that it's a good design. My sense is that a significant portion of the council is as well. My question is, do we have a plan for how to communicate the need to the community? For, for them to see the shape of the current building, for them to understand the design? How's that going to happen?
Sure, we've started a, first of all, just in the near term, we've started a bit of a limited community tour and presentation. And just from two weeks ago when we were in front of the rotary to now, the, the plans have changed. So we'll continue to do that. I will mention that once we pass your bond measure ordinance, the city is somewhat limited. We will be able to provide information and facts. Another group outs, outside of city staff, outside of city facilities will need to work on the campaign. I hope the information that we've provided tonight and in the preceding meetings gets that information out there. But, you know, we have a let's talk page. We'll have a one-page fact sheet. This may be something that you'll be able to help with, again, outside of city staff and city facilities.
Thank you.
Okay, last question, then we're moving on.
Thank you. So other thing I wanted to point out, the, I love the fact that the, the staff doors are covered with a canopy. The roof extends out over that. It tends to rain here a lot. And so having some cover over that, I presume it's two stories up. And it'd be nice to have some kind of a canopy that's over the door so that to protect the hardware, that the more it gets exposed to the weather, I presume the, the shorter it will last. Do we think about doing the same thing for the public door on the north side of having some kind of extended roof over it so that you don't have rain just literally splatting against the door?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, moving on.
All right, council, we'll, again, we have a, probably about a dozen slides. There's a lot of numbers on these slides, but what Aaron's going to do is just go high level. Make sure he's explaining the numbers you're seeing. We will make sure you have a copy of this presentation and it will be appended to the packet as well. Aaron.
So looking at the project cost estimate, I wanted to walk through a bit of a narrative. So at the February fourth city council meeting, the planning session, we identified an estimated likely project budget in the range of a hundred and five million to a hundred and nine million roughly. That included about seventy-five to seventy-eight million dollars worth of construction costs for site work building, operation building, phasing premiums, about twenty-two to twenty-three million in soft costs and about seven to eight million in sales tax. As we stepped forward working with public works department, the police department and others on programming site conditions, what we began to see were, was the need for increased capacity. Some of the deep grade cuts we described to you on, in April, on April fifteenth, some of the retaining structures, the podiums that we were discussing to just reach the capacity that public works and others needed for operations. And that presentation identified about two and a half million in estimated costs related to grade cuts. And that's three point eight million fully loaded, meaning with all the general conditions and requirements and taxes and escalation. And between a million and two million, it was translate to one and a half to three million fully loaded for concrete podium. When we add that into that preliminary cost estimate, what we find is that the costs were headed in a direction from a hundred and five to a hundred and nine million to a hundred and twelve to a hundred and eighteen million. And we came to at that time, ourselves and the city staff, and requested approval to consolidate the facilities on the eastern portion of the site, to move from the organization that we had starting in February and on April fifteenth, move all that over so that we could not incur those additional costs. And the city council's approval of that proposed site organization saved the project between seven and a half and nine million dollars and really set the project on a path to realize future savings through continued work on behalf of the design and engineering team and through a value engineering review process. Now, the project undertook a third party value engineering review process. And this was an independent peer review group that was retained to conduct a value methodology based review aimed at optimizing the facility design. And the purpose of this review is to identify potential opportunities to enhance project efficiency, overall project value, such as reducing construction costs, improving facility performance, lowering long-term costs, reducing risk and increasing sustainability. This review was conducted over a four week period and was done separately from the city's architectural and engineering team to ensure an unbiased assessment. The review resulted in several recommendations to reduce initial cost and a number of others that increased initial cost in service of lowering long-term operating cost and increasing sustainability. But the only recommendations, the only the recommendations that reduce initial costs were reviewed for incorporation into the project design. There were seven recommendations that were incorporated into the schematic design estimate. There were seven recommendations that were incorporated into the schematic design estimate, and we've listed those, those seven here. They ranged from site development hazardous waste remediation, a suggestion that in fact came from this council very early on, to demolish and abate and clear the existing city hall site outside of the bulk of the contract for the work with the project. Using your ability as a city and your staff to directly contract with the demolition and abatement subcontractors. That's a savings of over $200,000. Pedestrian paving, a minor savings, but one that will continue to be explored. Omitting portions of concrete sidewalk that are not directly tied to accessible public routes. Site development areas in the lower and upper yards utilizing pre-manufactured cold frame steel barrel vaults instead of custom-designed steel structures to cover material storage, other areas, is a savings of over $300,000. Relative to water supply, optimizing hydrant layout and omitting portions of eight-inch water main loops for reduced piping and trenching. It's about $100,000 savings. Roof construction. The VE team identified areas where we could reduce the square footage of the proposed roof by omitting the roof covering over non-essential programmatic areas. That was a savings of about $600,000. Exterior walls, lowering the heights of the roof over the building structures as well as the covered areas to realize the minimum heights required. This reduced the square footage of exterior wall assemblies and other assemblies to the tune of almost $300,000. And the largest savings was in exterior windows. Reducing that wall height and actually converting the window system in our thinking from a curtain wall system to a storefront system reduced the glazing square footages and the assembly components for savings of just slightly under a million dollars. So altogether, 2.5 million dollars worth of savings came out of that value engineering review process and led to some substantial changes in the design that we feel improved the overall design and performance. The resulting construction cost estimate is shown in the two tables on the screen. The table on the left looks at the structures. These are the buildings and weathering covers. The table on the right looks at the site work. For the structures, these are broken out into the categories of estimating, substructure, which are foundations, other elements. The shell, which are all of the supporting structures, superstructure, building enclosure, envelopes, windows, roofing, interiors. All the interior construction services, those are the building systems, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, IT and data. And equipment and components, these are the few built-in items that come along with the construction. That total hard cost was about $33 million. General requirements for the project, about 2.4 million. Design and construction contingency, as well as, sorry, design estimating and construction contingencies. And then adding in general conditions, insurance and performance bonds, overhead profit and fees. And finally, one of the largest components is escalation over time to arrive at a number of about 51 million for the structures. And then including the fully loaded cost for rainwater harvesting, potable water storage and reuse, brought the structures estimate to about $51,600,000. On the site work summary, from site preparation, site improvements, subsurface and above-grade mechanical and electrical utilities at about 14.5 million dollars. Again, moving through the list from general requirements, estimating contingencies, all the way through to escalation to Q2 of 2027, brings that number to about 22.5 million dollars. And the cost of advanced demolition and abatement for the city hall site, about $900,000. For a total site estimate of about $23,500,000. Now, this is only one part of the picture. The second part of this comes in terms of soft costs. These are the costs that it takes to actually administer the project, to design, to engineer it, to permit it, to supply it with furniture, fixtures and the equipment necessary to perform the operations inside the facility, to contribute the requisite 1% for art to the, to the art fund, legal services, and then maintaining a project contingency on the soft cost side. So soft costs, we generally track at about 30% of a project hard cost for something of this size. Through a detailed estimate with city staff, we're looking at about 28.2% of total hard costs for a soft cost estimate of about $21.1 million. When we roll those numbers together, we can see a construction budget of just over $75 million with project soft costs at about 21 million and state and local sales tax at 10.1%, 10.2%. It's 7.5 million for a total project budget of 103,900,000. And I'll pause there.
So, Aaron just spoke about a value engineering exercise that we undertook. That will be a component of future phases of design as well. So remember what I said earlier, the design continues to evolve and, and change.
Okay, council with questions, Councilmember Reynolds.
Yeah, I have a couple, but I'll start with my one on sales tax. Is there a way to know how much sales, of that sales tax will be returned to Mercer Island? And a way to maximize that return?
We can answer that question for you. Yay, not tonight specifically, but we will. All right, we'll, we'll follow up with you on that.
Okay, I'll let other people take a turn.
No, go ahead.
Oh, well, so, my second question is, you know, let's say I just bought a brand-new stove and washer dryer for my house. And then we decide to do a teardown and rebuild it. But I decide that those appliances are new enough that I'm going to just store them and put them into the new house rather than demolishing them. Is there anything in any of these buildings that's like that?
So, the question is, stop it. Is there anything that could be reused from the city hall building or the public works building? I would, I would say assets that aren't fixed to the building, many of them still have life. They have their own life cycles, so all of the equipment that we were just talking about, it's, it's being, it's separate from the building. Many of our, you know, computers and things, those are on a separate procurement schedule. This facility, though, I need to be honest, we will need to buy all new furniture. The furniture in city hall is, is not reusable. So, Councilmember Reynolds, your point, we will be, be smart about this and only purchase the new things that absolutely have to be purchased.
I know that'll be, you know, rounding error at the end, but I just, I had to ask it. I did have one other question about the value engineering. There was a number up there that, but I didn't, I didn't jot it down. So if we go back to that slide, then I'll probably be done with my questions.
Oh, yeah, the exterior windows, thanks. Is that a change to the design going to also result in greater energy efficiency for the building because of less, less uninsulated glass?
Yes, in fact, well, it was a part of a conversation, excuse me, with the value engineering team about developing a highly performative envelope and reducing that fenestration to the areas where it mattered for the interior occupants. But also to get it within the dimensional constraints of a stick-built storefront system, which is one of the least expensive to install. And really instead, put the money into the glazing where we get the insulation value for the windows themselves and the, 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 the envelope of the building as a high-performative element, so yes.
Okay, great, thanks for that, good work.
Okay, Councilmember Weinberg.
First of all, a very basic question. There's 7.5 million dollars of sales tax involved in this project. Is there any precedent for sales tax either being waived or being reduced in some way for a large municipal project by the, the state that they work, that, that we serve in?
It's a great question, but unfortunately, no.
Okay, so I also had a question about the, the curtain versus storefront fenestration. Just to visualize what, for the public, what that looks like. When you talk about curtain fenestration, you mean a wall that is just glass from the floor all the way to the ceiling? And with storefront, does that mean that it's, it goes up to like knee height or to waist height as a wall? And then it's glass from there on up?
That's, that's correct, council member. A curtain wall spans between the floor plates, so it's essentially hung on the floor plates, hence curtain hanging from the top. Storefront system bears on the wall below it. So you note from the renderings that we have a low wall that's about 36 inches high. From that, there's about eight feet worth of glazing, and that's a pretty standard storefront stick system size. And that runs in ribbons along the open office areas, letting in a lot of light, really where it matters for the occupants. So, yes, it's a simplification of the construction system. Moving from a curtain wall system to a storefront system doesn't change the appearance, but it changes the technical condition of that system to a lower-cost product.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Weicher.
That's a really great explanation of windows, thank you for that. Jesse, I had a question about 30% design and like as we get into this more in the years ahead, like there are checkpoints along the way. If we can save money or we have surprises, like can you talk a little bit about how the math might evolve with these big categories?
Yeah. Council, we're at the point, or we're getting very near the point where you will approve the schematic design and approve the cost estimate. So the estimate that you've received tonight is my recommendation for the, the project budget. As we move forward, we expect surprises in both, you know, in both directions, some savings and some not. We will have to, you know, incorporate that into our budget. This is not a circumstance where we come back and say, oopsie, you know, we need more money. That's, that's just the way the process works. Now, we're at an early stage of design, 30%, so the contingencies are built in because we haven't gotten into the, the specific design details. So it allows us, as, as things evolve, we, we have some room to anticipate changes. You can anticipate if we see supply costs go up unexpectedly, we may have to make a reduction elsewhere. That, that's just the way this will work over the next, you know, really two, three phases of design. That was my non-technical version, if Aaron has anything constructive to add, I'll look to him.
So, the, the next phases involve kind of two steps. We've just completed the schematic design phase. We would move into design development, which builds on that with a little more detail. And then finally into construction documents, which is the highest level of detail before permitting and construction. During each of those phases, we would anticipate no fewer than two pricing checkpoints. So one midway through each phase and one at the final of each phase. Those are our formal pricing checkpoints, allow us to take stock of everything. But throughout the duration of that work, the design team is working hand in hand with the cost estimator to evaluate some of the choices that we're making, understand trade-offs for lower-cost products, different systems, or some of the solutions that we might need to think about when we encounter conditions that were unexpected. So that will happen live throughout the process.
So, the point is when we approve this next month to go to the voters in November, we'll have some checkpoints along the way. This is the goalpost, the recommendation, the professional expertise, but we can tweak it as we move forward.
Absolutely, and if you've done a major project with this scale, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of changes, a lot of design decisions ahead of us still.
So my follow-up, if I can go ahead. So I'm used to like expensive stuff with substations and landfills and all that kind of stuff. So Aaron, this one's for you. This is a lot of money, but in the scope of a municipal project of this scale, whether it's municipal or private sector, it's a ton of money and it's within range of us, of the project that we're talking about for the work that we're doing in this building that's going to withstand. Can you give a little anecdote or examples of, of this not being that out of range, given the scale of the project we're doing here?
Yes. If, if, having worked on projects of similar scale that are different types, is the best way to provide an analogy. In working on a similar scaled building for, let's say, a corporate headquarters in Oklahoma City, this cost would have been double. Because the effort would have been put into the, the, the interior environment, right? For recruitment and retention of incredibly high-caliber workforce for that corporation. In this case, we're focused on that interior, but we have a lot of work to the outside, to the exterior, to the land. And so, what's been really impressive here in working with the design team and in all of the work we've done with city staff, the police department, is watching the, the needs and compromises take place, recognizing that we're dealing with an extraordinary amount of area, an extraordinary amount of land area, and we've got to reach a number that is kind of getting close to what tech offices want to build things for, not what corporate headquarters want to build things for, right? And that, that goes all the way down to the sizes of the floor plates, right? If I look at the office space on the second floor of the PSM building for Public Works, IT and GIS, these are square footages that are approaching 125 to 130 square feet per person. That's, that's sort of tech world square footage, not legal office 400 square feet per person, not legal office world. So, all the way through, there's been a real effort to hone this. And I would say that as we look at the project, we're surprised that it's not higher.
The, I couldn't read the slide that had the soft costs with the sales tax number. What was the total for 1% for the arts? Was it three-quarters of a million dollars?
It was $739,000.
Since we're borrowing money to pay for this, that doesn't make much sense to me. Is there a way for the council to waive that in this project?
The 1% for art is prescribed in code. I would want to talk to the attorney and get back to you with a response on that question.
Yeah, I seem to remember the code had some, some wiggle room for council because it was councilmatic 1%. But to me, on a facility like this, that is largely a secured public safety and maintenance building, embedding public art in it doesn't make a lot of sense, especially if we're borrowing that money at, you know, 4% for 30 years.
I have a list of follow-up items for the next meeting, and I would be happy to put that one on it.
Okay. Anything else, council? Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
Aaron, can you talk a little bit for these cost estimates that you're doing, especially around some of the hard costs for the, you know, steel, timber, that sort of thing? How are you factoring tariffs on a, you know, to, to be blunt, like, these things are changing pretty rapidly. This is a long project. How are you thinking about it for, for this project or maybe other clients as well? I mean, how are you supposed to, how are we supposed to think about this? You know, when a voter asks, well, are you, is this day 20 tariff or is it day 50 tariff? Like, what is the recommendation here?
You'll be surprised to know this is not the first time this has come up for me.
I can imagine.
So, the, the way we handle that, quite frankly, is to play it safe. And what you're seeing in the design today is in fact playing it safe. We've had a lot of conversations about the, one of the most expensive portions of this project, which is the superstructure. And that's one of the most expensive portions of any project. We've had a lot of conversations about how historically, for example, steel and mass timber, historically over the last 10 years, have tracked within 4% to 5% of one another until fairly recently, when steel faces some challenges potentially in the future. I mean, it doesn't matter whether that steel is coming from overseas or whether it's, you know, on, on home soil. So, the, the play it safe version moves to a mass timber version where we're looking at predominantly locally sourced, regionally sourced materials, regional companies and regional technology. So, that moves us in a direction to be more confident in the pricing that we're reflecting and the confidence in that pricing holding for a longer period of time, as an example.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Just a real quick technical question to call, follow up on the mayor's question. 1% for the arts, if we do stick to it, does that money have to go for arts in this facility? Or can we spend it for art all over the island if we wanted to?
I, yeah, but, but I don't have the code committed to memory. There is some flexibility, but I, I don't remember to what extent. No, no.
Let me ask, if the city goes out and buys steel pipe, do we pay sales tax for it? We do? Okay. No other questions? All right, we're going to move on.
All right, thank you, council. We'll be back at the next meeting with a follow-up and more coming.
Very good, thanks, everybody. All right, other, other business and planning schedule, anything? Not seeing anything, council absences? Nope, everybody's here? Okay, everybody's here. Councilmember reports, Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
In the vein of what we were just talking about, Jason and I will be at the PTA council in about 12 hours to do a very civil presentation, but I don't think they'll let us go on for an hour and a half. We'll be talking about public safety and maintenance. There's a PEC meeting next week. I also just want to give a shout out, the farmer's market opening was pretty wild on Sunday. It was great, and I'm sure that the weather would actually be nicer this weekend, so expect to see you all there.
Very good, I have nothing to report, Councilmember Weicher.
Just my congratulations to Mr. Becker, we look forward to seeing you soon.
Yep, congratulations, Councilmember Weinberg.
Yeah, so my next monthly open lunch is going to be at 12:00 PM on Saturday, June 21st at Mio Posto, addresses 26. 21st at Mio Posto, addresses 260176th Avenue Southeast. As always, all are welcome. It's an open agenda, news, sports, weather, humor, anything you want. All I ask is that everyone shows respect to the chef by ordering some food and or beverage, and let me know if you're coming, so I can reserve a large enough table.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Just note, there's a Parks Direct Commission meeting on Thursday, which I'm looking forward to.
Councilmember Anro.
Welcome, Daniel. See you soon.
Okay. Next regularly scheduled, the next regularly scheduled hybrid city council meeting will be on Tuesday, June 17, beginning at 5:00 PM. The city council will now go into executive session for approximately one hour to consider selection of a site or the acquisition of real estate by lease, purchase, or when public knowledge regarding such consideration would cause the likelihood of increased price pursuant to RCW 42.30.1101B, and to discuss with legal counsel pending a potential litigation pursuant to RCW 42.30.1101I. Time is now 9:10 PM. As council, as a reminder, council, please stay seated until staff has terminated the broadcast. Thanks for joining us tonight.